Easy, just the same as way y'all never watched Love Jones.
I've watched what?
Love Jones. It's not a part of my culture.
Uh, hello? Uh, you can leave that open. Uh, we got a gavel?
Uh, from outside on the, uh, in front of the festival.
Uh, good evening and welcome to the October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three Board of Trustees Work Session.
May I have a motion to open the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, get my work session, huh? Uh, since we have so many village employees here tonight, uh, we're going to start with the items that they are here for so that they can go home at a decent hour. They're here almost exclusively for the capital items. Jerry, you wanna walk us through?
Work session capital items? Let's start with.
Uh, this is citizens, uh, two B.
Can we go in reverse and do two B four first?
Yeah, do whatever you want.
Okay. So there are a few items. Replacing three twenty-one, three twenty-one, and also finally, we're moving, um, replacing some of our parking lots and also vehicles, not finally, but they're given to the end of their life. I mean, they've done it a long time and we want to continue to utilize their time, uh, for mobiles that they are providing.
So we currently have four, plus one, plus one, plus two, plus three, right now we only have four. We need additional one for the new position. But also, four vehicles prior to the first thought, same time, and like, are over ten years old. So what we'd like to do is to purchase one vehicle for the new position and replace two of the existing vehicles with two new vehicles. And then the remaining two, the five and considered on the one.
And this is on the capital plan for this year?
Yes.
Any other questions, concerns?
So is it on the capital budget we adopted, is it on the five-year capital plan? So it's on the really big plan that's not really an accomplishable plan?
It's, it's the really big plan that we're slowly chipping away at and trying to accomplish it all.
But within five years is pretty unrealistic.
So we're trying to do as much as we can within the boundaries that we have. And I can tell you that in the last five years, or maybe four years, we, um, we've committed to thirty-five million dollars in capital purchases and our taxes have remained below the tax gap every single year. So we do a good job managing our cost, managing the capital spending that we have and we're continuing to do that. Not focus on revenue, that's also the focus on making sure that we're purchasing things at their end of useful life and not just when they suddenly get banged up and look ugly. And that's really how we're doing it.
I mean, aside from supply chain issues, uh, vehicles and equipment is kind of the low-hanging fruit of the capital plan. That's the easiest stuff to find and purchase and replace.
Is, is there still a backlog when you order vehicles? Have we caught up a bit?
Some manufacturers. Not all.
Okay.
And these are hybrids, right?
They're plug-in hybrids or?
Either, the new, the new basis with either one.
Okay.
They're like all three.
Questions, concerns?
So what's gonna be the effect on the operating budget next year? So how much is the interest, you know, because interest rates are going up? And I mean, my concern isn't any specific item. I mean, I'm not saying that any of the things in this five-year plan are things that the village doesn't need or want. Sure. But we typically don't spend that hundred-plus million dollars over five years. So I think we're, I, I really, you know, again, I, I'm harping on, I think that we need to adopt, I know that we need to adopt a capital budget.
Bless the pleasure.
Uh, for a one-year period when we adopt our regular budget and also have a five-year capital budget, not just a spending plan. And that when something is adjusted, we're able to take something away. And that's, that's my underlying concern.
Adopt the capital limit, that's probably what you want to adopt. And what I can say is that some of the years we, we've had during COVID, three, four, five-year, um, five-million-dollar capital plans. And then a couple of years ago, we had fifteen million dollars. So it fluctuates based on the needs of the, the needs of the community, needs of the organization. But you can look at, um, seven to eight million dollars of capital expenditures, expenditures. And we can comfortably include that in the budget annually because we have, we shown that we have been able to do that. So that's an average. I'm just looking at averages.
I, I'm just looking for something more concrete so that if we, if, if, if something comes up, that's, that's not, that we hadn't planned on, we can figure out how to adjust.
You, you can. We also have eighteen million. If something comes up, uh, that is unplanned or all of a sudden we need to spend a couple of million dollars, you have significant money in the reserves that all of us have configured to the Board of Trustees and staff to be able to handle those emergencies. These are items that have been worked into the capital plan with Scott significantly with the staff and made sure that.
And they're on schedule for this year.
Yeah, and they're on schedule for this year.
But there's so much on the schedule for this year and there's so much in that big plan. And my point continues to be, I think we have to know what we're gonna spend in a given year. And when we take something else off that list, figure out what we're gonna take away from what we planned on spending. And, and that's, I, I, you know, I mean, I'm.
I'm included in that. My number's gonna be high, but I think that's a board decision, not my decision. But of course, you can consult and I can give my opinion. I'm straight ahead. The reality is, we have been handling seventy-nine million dollars annually on average of capital and taxes are nowhere near going up to the cap. We're staying above, below the cap all the time. Significant, we have a cap. So there's room to grow, there's room to reinvest in the community. And I think deferring things like twenty-year-old parks may not be exactly, you know, the best way to go, to continue to go. And your vehicles, I'm not sure about the boat.
My bad. Pardon me?
Right, but I can tell you seventy-nine million dollars that that and the budget officer can handle that amount of capital expenditure within the trend and budget that we've been managing.
And didn't we just come under budget?
Last year and the year before and the year before.
Yeah, so, so it's not like we're spending money we don't have.
Okay, thank you. Everybody's fun? The, uh, vehicles?
Yes.
Let's talk about the boat.
Yes, so the other item that I've asked Jeff to listen and help me guide you through this. So under the police department, we have big constables. We have two boats. One of the boats is over twenty years old. Um, for the past two years, we go five for grants. We use Coast Guard to try to attain at least seventy-five percent of the funding for your boat. Unfortunately, we have not been successful for the last two years. So we're going to apply again this year, but the question is, if we don't buy the boat out of our own funding and we don't get the grant funding, then we're going to have to put more money into the boat to, to get off of it. So.
How much would we have to put into the boat? What are we talking?
We're talking about eighty-six thousand dollars.
Buy what?
No, that's, that's repairs. That's repairs.
For repairs of the engines, to keep the engines in service. Right now, they're at their service life. They're at twenty-five hundred dollars, which is a service life for those engines. So there's a lot of external parts that need to be replaced, intercools, oil coolers, oil units. You replace the last stuff, you're not, you don't know what's going on internally. So that's the issue with just spending this forty-something thousand dollars just to hold these parts on accident. There are options would be to buy replacement motors, you know, for that boat, which is about forty-two thousand.
And what's the boat worth? Uh, I, I presume if we got a new boat, we would get rid of the old one, right? What, what, what's the problem?
Somewhere between seventy-five thousand, fifty and seventy-five thousand.
So, so we can, so essentially, we can pull that amount off of whatever we, I got a new boat because it's, you know, right?
When, when would the new boat come in? Is there a delay with this as well?
What about the other, tell us about the other boat? Are there two boats here?
Harbor one, that's a, that's my work boat that I use at the harbor master's office. So that boat is, right now, it's not like the motor blew up and it's out of service. That boat, nineteen eighty-two.
The boat what?
In nineteen eighty-two. And it doesn't really do what I need is to build it's too big. I need a more smaller boat to get around the dock and put it around and that kind of stuff. So that's the idea that I wanted to do this.
How many times have these boats, uh, especially that last one, eighty-two? How long, how many times have that boat come, you've come up to the border, um, requesting a new one?
So what are you doing then?
Begging, can you see total, I need something moved that can move it without operation.
Guys, uh, same who definitely is the harbor master boat, so. What do you wanna do with the, the fleet boat?
Is that something we would, I know with the delay, it would come in here, is that something we pay for now, holding paper on, upon receipt?
Um, when I had the privilege of touring the harbor master, um, area with you and you were telling me that all the areas that we cover and we cover more than just the village of Marne. Can you, can we ask for funding from other people since we are, um, patrolling and their areas as well?
We, we already get money from Larchmont.
Five-four, as part of the grant and justification, being included there, mutual aid and how we respond to other locations and we participate in trials in the coast bar, other municipalities, that's the reason they want to apply for that initial funding. Uh, we just only heard that we did receive grant funding a couple of weeks ago. So by this time next year, we would know if we received the grant funding. So timing-wise with the boat, it could be possible that we receive funding.
Did they ever tell you why you don't as to how you can prove?
Just lack of funding for other municipalities that receives funding. Um, they only have so much money and unfortunately, we were not one of the ones to receive the funding. I think last year it went to Suffolk County.
That, that sort of county for the wood farms. Right now, a lot of the port security money is going to that for the wind farms that are going offshore.
Yeah, it's the port security grant, which probably makes it a little, not as competitive as some other larger, uh, municipal entities that, uh, have complex traffic going in and out of their harbors. Um, but like, uh, Jeff mentioned, uh, and I mentioned, we already get money from Larchmont Yacht Club. They manage, uh, Larchmont Harbor for the village of Larchmont. So we already are, we already are receiving, was it twelve to fifteen thousand a year? Yeah.
Also, we're gonna be also applying for two other grants from the port security. It's a different brand than the boats, but one is for training and school and the other one is for engine maintenance. So like the maintenance of new engines. I knew engines for three-two-one now, we can probably get some to do that. Because those aren't very competitive grants, nobody applies. And those we'd probably.
And what's the, what would be the total granted, like a water mountain?
Uh, it would probably be somewhere around the forty thousand. The fuel and training grant is twenty-five thousand.
So that, that boat, the motor, so if we were to get several grants for motors, that money would be deducted off.
You could buy, you could do it for new, for new motors, okay? And if we get a grant from the Coast Guard and you've already committed to buying the boat, does that matter? I mean, Bill, will they still fund it?
I think they'll still fund it as long as it meets their specs. Like, to be the coast guard, it has to have a C run technology in case there's some kind of nuclear attack. The, the product that has to, as long as it has those features.
I know where I'm going. Gonna be crowded, Doc, right?
Wow.
Could've told us that.
Yeah. With our, I, I have a question with you. With our, like, new accreditation for the department, like, how, do you think that would boost our odds in getting and receiving this grant for the boat? Or that, like, is that separate?
It's definitely something that we can include. Part of a total, but also, um, we just did a huge training with, uh, other municipalities with the boat search and rescue. So I think as part of that, I'm surprised it did come here, were able to see the types of things that we can do. So that's what I was hoping to do, you know, next thing.
We had a big interagency drill with the Coast Guard, Ali, Urkel, Fry, Yonkers. And when, when they came here and saw that we can build there with the rest, the Coast Guard was really impressed that we're fit. Now, the other boats had that we didn't have, so I think that would help us when we see that we're not once without, we pay for that, those other departments having. You know, and we're still able to find a boat and do all the stuff that they do, so.
We also get navigation aid.
Yep. That happens every year, right?
Yes, what is that?
That's, uh, state funding from the state for the work.
Thirty-two K per year.
Yep.
Thanks all.
Alright, uh, is everybody fine with the boats to replenish the, the fleet?
Yeah.
How many boats do we have?
The police department has two, three-two-one and three-two-seven, the harbor master's office has two, and recreation has one. The one little regular.
Doesn't float?
That's not a good attribute.
So why do we still have it if you don't use it? So now we have like a little safety issue.
Alright, then, yeah, thank you both.
Thank you. Good luck with the, uh, bailing. Don't ask for a boat.
Good evening, ma'am, board. Um, so tonight, we're asking for some improvements, uh, in the red and blue room of the pavilion. Uh, so we have two, uh, multi-purpose rooms on the harbor on pavilion. One is called the red room, this is toward red, one called blue, this is blue. Word blue, keeps us currently using the blue room, um, and the red room for the suspension needs activities, uh, fitness, obviously, uh, scene programming or camp stuff. So we do a lot, a lot in there. The floors are twenty-five plus years old. They've been there a long time, um, and survived the flood or two as well. And, uh, they reach the end of their life, so I work, park torment and city manager to, uh, call the boat for, for that project. We have a limited availability when we can do this work because the pavilion is pretty much in use seven days per week from morning to night. So we would do this work at the end of August, the last three weeks of August after camp's over and before school starts. We would have that opportunity, uh, so we're asking for the money during this period because they're taking the time to schedule it and make sure that we can have everything ready for those three weeks at the end of August because we miss that, we know. If you would have, yes, a lot of programs and we're not trying to inconvenience any community, any stuff going on, so. In addition to the red and blue room, is that we, we currently lease the space that we have the school program, which is about twenty-seven-five a year?
Yes.
Right, twenty-seven-five a year. So it's a little over two-year, or, yeah, it's key. So we didn't have that program, we didn't develop that program, we don't really manage no program. Basically a space and we want to make sure that, you know, they're around for a little while, probably do pretty well. As far as that, you know, over two thousand dollars a month, but sixty thousand dollar improvement in the entire building for the two red and blue room, is easily covered by something like that, so. Um, these floors will also be resilient with the chip on, will, has worked away so that if it floods, we can take them out, power wash them, get the floors all dry and then put them back in. It's gonna be like a thick rubber, so, uh, once again, we're thinking about if we do flood, how we can get back to learning the same stuff.
Like we did with the piles.
Yes. True.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
It's coming along nicely.
Uh, so we also have quite a bit of storage issues, uh, you know, we run thirty-five, like all events, all of them have grams, like, we have, uh, two, uh, larger trailers behind the building that are filled with an ax. We use a boat, the old armed gears, fire hook and ladder firehouse. Uh, so we're asking if you take the adjacent room next to the red room and build a little storage area, uh, and with closets and a door so we can really get all of our event bins and then we can organize properly. Also, we've got a free-up space of an old firehouse where we can have our emergency blood supply and stuff. So if we run through that at the same time, we better talk to, we're gonna do this area at the same time, uh, there's gonna be a nice effect.
Questions or concerns, Mr. Penta?
Is it, yeah, is it possible to have, like, kind of an external kind of storage at the harbor, at the, near the beach near pavilion? Would that be better than, like, adding this, like, kind of add-on? Or you think it's better that everything's in under that one kind of roof?
So we do have external storage, there, there are shipping painters. And, uh, they're not temperature-controlled, which is an issue. You're throwing t-shirts, you know, if I order fifty new t-shirts, I like to keep them for next year, but they have to be in climate control.
No, yeah, I get it, I get it.
So there's certain items that I would rather not store outside where sports equipment we can and other items. If you ever come in the building, I'll give you a tour. It's packed to the gills.
Oh, I've, yeah, I've seen it.
Difficult situation.
And I have a question about the red and blue room. Is that something, I know we kind of lease it out, would, I mean, I don't think it makes sense. I, I'm just trying to think of how we can, if the people are leasing that space to kind of be included in that kind of renovation because they're using that space. Is their fee gonna go up per year or, because we're kind of doing this renovation for them to use the space?
Last year, uh, the village manager signed a four-year contract with percentage increases.
Keeps. You gotta remember, keeps is an after-profit, yeah, that used to, you know, for kids in his community that have an affordable, they, childcare.
I signed off on a four-year because we gave them a percent increase that they agreed to. So each and four years is a decent increase.
That, that makes, I just wanna make sure we're capturing that.
Yeah.
And they are a, they are a, uh, they're great. They're great and they're a community, uh, group that has, uh, struggled over the years to find a space that suits them and it suits them really well. And they get along with, uh, everybody down there.
But I don't, I've lived in a few communities, I, I never recall having that kind of a program in any of the communities I live in. I don't know if it's unique or not to our area, but definitely unique to me.
It's definitely unique to the American. It was, it was started a long time ago by a lot of, uh, good people. It's, it kept going that way.
But Bri has it, Skarsdell has it.
Good.
Yeah. I mean, similar, not same.
So those are the two, um, pavilion improvements. Like I said, the pavilion is old, it can use a lot more work, but those are the ones that need to be done immediately, um, while we figure out what our future plans are. Last item I have on here is a Toro electric, uh, UTV, which is basically a tour vehicle. People don't realize this, but the recreation department does a lot of beach maintenance. Uh, we also do a lot of programs throughout the park. Uh, we currently have a golf cart that is getting destroyed by being used as a work vehicle. And, um, it shouldn't be, um, because now when I need to transport people and we need the programs, it's nothing. Idea. So, um, we're asking for an all-electric version, uh, that we can move through the forty-four acre harbor park to give everything we need to do with a program, whether it be maintenance, with the garbage cans, throwing out garbage. Using something that will take up needing more than, uh, something that should be on the links, so.
And, and these, um, vehicles can be stored high and dry in the event of coastal flooding?
Correct, yeah, this particular, so the original golf cart, that'd be forty years ago now we bought it.
Mm-hmm.
It was car batteries. Now, it's lithium-ion, kind of like a Tesla battery, built in, they're so much more efficient than the car battery regulation. Um, whereas this thing will last a long time. So we lose some of our, right, the storms, whether it's a coastal or river, um, issue. Uh, we move a lot of stuff to the pier or we'll move it to, like, um, old firehouse, places like that, sometimes in the regatta parking lot, you know, our cassettes underneath. The golf cart, uh, doesn't have like a doors and stuff, so I'll usually park it in the Jerry's spot in the regatta, like underneath, that's regatta. Um, but everything is moved in the pavilion, just in case you were curious. We have a lot of commercial metal racks and everything gets carried up. A lot of things stay there and anything that's not up gets lifted up from the table, so like, you would have to have six feet of water to destroy a lot of our stuff.
Sure.
Well, we've been through this before quite a few years, so. Our floor has been through the blue and red floor, I think, a lot.
The other question, Mr. Penta?
I'm gonna bring up the star of the show now. I'll stay up here with Jeff in case you have any questions.
Yeah. Gotcha. And then, guys, in spur.
So what I just handed you guys, I sent, I sent out in May, those are pictures of, of cars I'm gonna be talking about tonight. Uh, first, requesting an all-electric ride-on mower and trailer for the parks department use. It's a gravely six-foot electric mower. Uh, right now, we use John Deere diesel mowers. Uh, we're gonna start trying to explore the electrical power world and see if they will be cut out for commercial use. Um, with the electric ride-on mower, we're gonna need to start trailering it. Right now, we drive our machines to each park, but because this is all-electric and all-battery, uh, if we drive this machine to all the parks, it cuts about two hours off our cut time.
Wow. So what are you gonna trail with, with, what are you gonna drag?
Uh, just a regular pickup truck.
You're not gonna need a new pickup truck?
No.
No, we have a lot of those.
No, not yet.
I've seen this movie before.
Anybody have any questions on the electric mower or trailer?
No, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So you started talking.
Does, does the electric mower work as well as the? They say it does. Um, you know, this is a little more beefier than your Ego or Ryobi ride-on electric mower. This actually has Tesla batteries.
Oh, wow.
So it's a little more advanced. Each blade is run off its own motor. It's not one motor for the whole machine, so there's three blades on this machine. Each blade has its own motor. So Gravely is a big off-course maintenance company and commercial mower, you know, really make or sell a Ford, a Redmond trailer or? No, this is the first commercial-grade electric mower out on the market.
Gotcha.
That made for acres and acres of grass.
And this equipment will be charged where?
Uh, in the park's garage. Um, so this equipment comes with a charging cart. You don't plug the machine in, you actually take the batteries out and put them on the cart. Um, you know, we have an in-house electrician that can do whatever, um, renovation is necessary to the electrical system to charge it.
You have two-twenty or?
Yeah. Yeah. So this price comes with an additional set of batteries. This way, I can go for eight hours of cutting, like I do with my gas-powered machines.
Take the batteries out, charge them.
Batteries, I can leave the machine in the park, transport the batteries back to the garage. Grab the new set of batteries, bring them back out to the machine, plug them in the machine, continue to progress. I don't have to trailer the machine back and forth to charge it.
Gotcha.
And, uh, uh, I know Tesla also makes solar-powered units to charge batteries, do it.
There is a solar panel roof option on it, but I was told by the supplier that it is very brand-new and the amount that it would have to stay out in the sun wouldn't work for us.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Plus, we really don't like having canopies over our grass-cutting equipment because we have a lot of trees here. And we cut under those trees and, you know, one of the.
And we cut under those trees, and you know, one of those branches ca- catches one of the canopies with the solar panel on it, then it's just. It becomes a big bushless, crunchy.
What I'm thinking is wherever you're taking the batteries to charge, if there was a, a uh, you know.
Oh, at the Parks Building, you mean?
Yeah.
The Parks, but that's a different, that's.
Oh, that that's a whole different discussion and and story.
Yeah.
A lot is the way to say something.
No, it's fine, I'm patient, um. Can the trailer be uh multipurposeful?
The trailer can be used for anything that will fit on it. It's not just for the electric lawnmower, I just need it to shuffle the electric lawnmower back and forth to each park. But in case of a storm and someone needs to trailer a boat around, then it could trailer a boat around if. A piece of equipment breaks down on the road, I don't have to pull a boat truck, I could just winch a piece of equipment up on the trailer and bring it to wherever we need to go.
Okay.
A trailer is a multipurpose.
Yeah.
That that everybody in the village could use, if Gino needs a trailer for something, then I'll meet him with the trailer.
Any other questions for?
And this will all be delivered in twenty twenty-five, correct?
Uh as of right now, he doesn't have a lead time on this, I I spoke to him, he's me, I'm waiting for him to get back to me. Um I'm assuming that it's a year out, because almost everything's a year out. Park-wise, secret-wise, so I'm not as, I'm not guessing that we can get this this year.
The mower is a year out?
Wow, yeah.
You gotta remember, it's all electric, so electric has more computer system, has more chips, has more everything, so. It's not like a regular diesel machine where it just has an engine in it, it started up and go, it has an alternator, it has a battery, this has batteries. Computer chips, software, it has like a little brain in it that controls the whole.
Are we losing money with the equipment that we have right now?
Are we losing money with the equipment we have right now? I have a very good. Parks mechanic who keeps our fifteen-year-old equipment running smoothly. They are fifteen years old. We do a good job of upkeeping them.
But eventually.
Not eventually, we are spending more than we should on keeping those machines running.
Okay.
So, so if I could say if I can, my original conversation between Jeff and I was to replace one of these. And we're trying to do things a little bit differently here.
Diesel, and I even guess.
Diesel.
Diesel. We're trying to do things a little bit differently, it's easy to buy another diesel mower, put it in the rotation. But we'll never know what the capabilities of the electric mowers are until we have one.
No, I I applaud you for doing it, I think uh the Committee for the Environment will be happy that you're doing it, I think it's a, it's a good idea, I think it's the wave of the future. But uh it's just, it's amazing to me, you know, how all technology has come, right, yeah.
It's the demand, if they weren't, you know, interested golf courses wanting to do it, it wouldn't happen. Golf courses run the the equipment, the equipment game, nobody else, yeah.
It's like California, California kind of runs the uh miles per gallon.
Yeah.
Because if 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 they say, you know, we want fifty miles per gallon, twenty percent of cars sold in the United States are sold in California. It pushes the market, yeah.
So the next one is Harbor Island improvements, what this covers is a splash pad, Lanza field improvements. A new bandstand with a concrete pad, color coating the basketball court, and a total playground we have.
I don't think we need a new splash pad. No, I'm just kidding, call.
Well, is this, is this additional, we're expanding it, or are we just replacing?
So what we're gonna do is basically from the playground back, it's a total renovation of that whole area. So what happens now is.
The Lanza field.
Lanza field is pitched four inches in the opposite direction, which means it's pitched towards the playground. Now, when it rains, the water play runoff ends up in the playground and floods the playground out, which. Kids can't use the playground for four, five, six days at a time, especially the little infant area, that becomes like a swimming pool. Um so it would be a total rip-out and redo of Lanza to pitch it out towards the grass. Which then in turn, we could take the playground itself, expand it a little bit. Put down safety rubber surface and put new equipment in.
Take out the old equipment?
The only thing I'm planning on keeping is the gazebo that's in the middle of the playground. Everything else, if you look through the pictures, is rotted, it's a wood playground, it's from two thousand and four. We have pieces that we cannot get right now because a company in Canada. Bought over the company that we got that playground equipment from, so anytime we try and order something for that playground equipment, it gets held in customs. On top of that, they don't make pieces for it anymore, it's outdated, no one really does wood playground equipment anymore. It's mostly, if you do find a wood structure these days, it's probably cedar, which doesn't match up with our um timber. Third part of that is the new bandstand, right now we have a bandstand, I couldn't even tell you how old it is. We have made repairs to it, we try and keep up with it as much as possible, it's ve- very popular for the concerts in the harbor and. Uh Bach to Rock and, you know, all those school programs, they use it, uh. Artistry uses it all the time, but what we wanna do is we wanna expand it, so we could start using it for rainy days on camp. Using it to give campers a place to eat lunch, that's not in the middle of the field, it's it's covered. Uh we wanna be able to rent rent it out as a um party rental, right now.
What's the, what's the rental on that? What's our, is you gonna make it sixty by forty, what was the size?
A hundred person, it's forty by twenty.
Wow.
What is it now, it's like?
It's a.
Twenty by fifteen or something?
It's twenty by thirteen, I think it is. So we're, we're gonna be able to put about a hundred people under this structure.
What are the stories, what are we, is there gonna be storage underneath or no?
So I don't wanna do storage with the structure, there's possibility, I left enough room at the end of it to put our own storage in. Um. Can I talk about the?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
Make sure that we know what the.
Yeah, so um, you know, having a hundred-person structure that we could rent out and have parties in. The closest bathroom to that proximity is the Marine Education Center. It's still your walk across the fields to go into the pavilion, someone has to let you in the pavilion to use the restroom. So there's possibly, there's left enough room where we could have a connectable porch slash restroom. Out there, near the.
And would this be a full bi- restroom, or would this be kind of a waterless kind of situation?
This will be like a waterless situation where it's, you know, we don't need to run water out to the field, we don't need to run sewer out to the fields.
Many like they have in all the state parks.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking we should do.
So, um. So the, the, the bandstand, we project, so as you know, we rent a deck at the harbor right next to the pavilion, pretty popular, I'd say. Four times a weekend, what two a day we're doing, it's fifty people, and uh last year, uh we got twenty-two thousand revenue. From just that fifty-person pavilion deck, uh so we extrapolate to fifty times, if I two-year looking at forty. Uh two thousand a year in revenue just for that hundred person, if you do similar bookings. Which we're turning people away at the deck now because that's all we have to rent, right? So we anticipate that this could pay itself off within two and a half years. In revenue? In revenue, it's uh, and it will be huge for our camp, I mean, just having a shaded spot where a hundred kids, uh that. Is not in the field, it would be terrific, you know, or that it's drizzling, uh I mean, it wouldn't work for lightning, but if it's drizzling or. We could put them under there, it's just, they just don't have anything covered in the harbor that can possibly fit them.
So in three and four years out, it's a revenue stream.
Absolutely, I'd say, I'd say year three would be good.
Would there? Is our idea to have, oh, never mind, I see it, answering a question.
Okay.
I I think having a hundred-person rental facility on the water is invaluable.
Well, is it including, is it including any benches or anything tables and?
Yes, as uh expect out picnic tables, which are in the, in the.
Yeah, they're in. Okay, I just wasn't sure if it was a part of that.
Twenty thousand dollar plus expense, bigger, commercial picnic tables aren't cheap, so. I would like to, because when you do parties, uh you need a refrigerated. Space people, cakes, they got whatever, so right now, we have that stuff in the pavilion when we do the parties, but. If we, the storage area, Jeff, we worked on it, I think it's gonna be helpful for everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions on the?
No, I'm happy, it seems very well thought out.
The next, we're gonna go to the splash pad, so. I'd say about a month into the season this year, we lost a splash pad for two or three days. Two or three days, so the inner workings of the splash pad are totally rotted out. The cellooids, the valves, the copper piping, the electrical unit that's underground, the wires that go to the splash pad. The wires that turn the splash pad on and off, the sensors that turn the splash pad on and off. The box in the main office, everything is beyond repairable. Which then turned us to just having to have to switch it on and off, there was no. Break if no one was in it.
What was the reason why this happened?
It just, it's all underground equipment that sort of has been there for.
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Both of them was. Well, the mechanics are in a pit.
Okay.
Underground.
They're on the ground.
Yeah, they're, they're about three feet below the beach level. So even when we don't flood, we get groundwater in the harbor all the time, the pits always fall. Um. It's very outdated, we have no pressure, on clocks don't work. Like I said, it's basically just an on and off piece of equipment right now, um.
Definitely interrupt, because I think our water bill was about forty percent higher this year because of that.
And it was high last year.
Yeah, we had to turn it on and then not be able to, because it has this mechanism.
It had a sensor when the kids weren't in it.
There's no activity, it shuts itself down.
Yeah, so we, we um. Hundred forty thousand dollars a year just for utilities on the spray ground, this year we're at about fifty-three, or fifty-three. Um which is issues are one of the main issues, the other thing is, it's on all the time, seven days per week. Nine AM to five PM, and it's constantly being used, especially when.
Yeah, it's packed.
Packed, overcrowded, not overcrowded, I don't want to use that word, but well.
Well-used.
It's well-used, it's low, and when you, when your beach is closed for swimming, when it's ninety degrees up, twenty percent of the summer. We need something.
Yeah.
Of course.
Something that's reliable, and we need something that's functional, um and we need something that when I come into work in the morning. I'm not getting screamed at, three hundred kids can't use it because. Parts are down, down, taken long sprinklers out, always the same. Yeah, so.
Thanks.
So we had replaced a bunch of the fixtures, can we reuse those, it's it's just, it's just the.
So who the, who the fixtures can be retrofitted for a new system?
The new ones.
The n- the new ones, the seahorse and the palm tree, those are gonna be retrofitted into the new spray ground. Everything else is outdated and obsolete, it doesn't involve the same system.
How much bigger is it gonna be?
It's almost gonna be double the size.
Excellent.
Ex- original size, yes. So it's gonna be.
To the lightbulb, right, Jeff, where it is now?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be almost up to the lightbulb, it's gonna have different areas like a playground does, it's gonna have a small. Infant area, it's gonna have a three to five range, it's gonna have a five to seven range, and it's gonna have a seven to twelve range. It's gonna be lighted, so we can use it at night, we can use it on tiki night, we could have parties on the beach.
It'd be smart.
Keep it up, keep it open a little later, um also, we're taking all the mechanics and bringing them above ground. It's bought in its own separate box, nothing's gonna sit in water. Um. Yeah, and that's basically it, we're basically gonna double the size, um.
To twenty-two or twenty-three years ago, Mr. Wrecker and myself, uh back there, were uh. Very hard to lobby people to get that spray ground put in.
Yeah, I, I was, I was amazed that it was controversial.
It, it, it warmed me old Irish heart to see my grandson painting it this year.
So, so the new, the new plan that me and Jason would like to go with is. So I don't know if anybody's ever been to a water park and they have that big bucket that fills, and then after a while it dunks on the kid.
Yeah.
Uh this, this spray ground's a little more interactive, there's little stars on the ground that the smaller kids could step on and the water shoots up. In the sky, so it's, it's.
Big kids too.
Yeah, a- adults too, it's just a little more interactive for. For one of the biggest destinations in Harbor Island. Because a lot of people just come for the spray ground, they don't come for the beach, they don't come for the fields, they just come to let their kids run around in water in a closed area.
Under eight crowd.
Yeah, and and just hang out, it's spectacular to me.
I, I think it's, you know, that. These improvements are done, I think you're gonna see our revenues and our daily parking revenues and our beach revenues go like this. I. You build it, they will come, you know, that sort of thing, and I think we're not asking for Six Flags, we're just asking to make our little community.
So, so if if we approve this, when could this thing be put in?
So if we approve the whole, sorry, if we approve the whole plan, we're looking at a twenty-four, twenty-five install. Because. Because there's multiple moving pieces to this improvement, playground, Lanza, bandstand, spray grounds. I wanna get everybody on the same page and kind of just close that area once. Get it done with, this way, we only have to figure out what to do with soccer, baseball, softball, and everybody using the beach. At one period of time, and not having a extended down period, because even though the splash pad could be worked on. We're gonna be building a bandstand right next to the beach, no one's gonna wanna be next to the beach while there's cement trucks and carpentry going on and and sheet metal being done. We could do the playground, but if we don't fix Lanza and the flooding issues that Lanza creates for the playground. Then we're still gonna have the same problem, the clay is gonna end up on the newly poured rubber surface.
We wanna go from the playground right to the.
Playground to the water.
Yeah.
And and, and can we do it in the shoulder season, uh and not lose a, a lot of uh warm weather use?
So what I'm going, what I'm trying to shoot for is doing it in a fall season, the whole thing. Um I don't know if that's possible, because I don't know how far this is gonna go, so I don't wanna start. You know, I'd love to start scheduling people, listen, from next October, your mind, your mind, your mind, we're just gonna all work together and do this. Um but I'm shooting for a fall season, so it's as minimal of an impact.
We're talking next fall?
Next fall.
Next fall construction.
Yes.
Okay.
What, will this double the water usage, or will it be more efficient than the current?
It, it's gonna be more efficient because it's a, it's a, it's a little bit of a different operating system. So right now, the wall sprays have to be on with the floor sprays, the tree has to be on with. The rainbow sprays, this, everything, everything is separate, so the stars don't spray water unless you go and step on them. The bucket won't fill unless the bucket system is on, the uh seahorse. Won't be going the same time as something that's not being used on the other side of the park. So right now, someone might be in the wall spray, but they might not be in the seahorse, the seahorse is running when it doesn't need to be running. This new system is all individually synchronized pieces of equipment. So I believe the only thing that stays constant when it's on is the bucket fill. But then, if no one's using the bucket fill, the bucket doesn't empty. So it's a little, it's a little more. Water-friendlier than, yes.
So maybe, maybe I've asked, I don't know if I've asked this before, but have we ever had past the issue at the. Spray ground where there's too many kids on there, or?
Uh we, I mean, I could only speak for what I've seen, but we've had little kids run into each other because it's, you know, they're in a tight. They're excited, you know, water's in their eyes, and then, you know, like get a head-on collision because.
Yeah, for people during camp, uh a lot of people don't wanna come because the camp takes up a large portion of it, so. Yeah, it's crowded.
So they won't pay the daily, you're saying, they just won't come?
Correct, or they'll come after free. Because uh, you know, when you have your forty-year-old and you have twenty-five.
They wanna deal with kindergarten.
Yeah.
And you, and we can't recycle the water because the Board of Health won't let us do that.
Correct, yeah, we tried, we looked in with it.
We also can't recycle the water because we don't have a big enough water supply to recycle. We also can't recycle the water, because we don't have a big enough water supply to recycle. So we we. We spec'd out two different systems, uh water recycle and a system like we have now. The problem is our supply water is not big enough to run a recycled system. We don't have enough pressure and we don't have enough gallons per minute coming into the harbor. Now, take account, everybody using bathrooms, plus water in the field, our water pressure goes from about eighty-five down to sixty at the spray spray ground. At any given time. So we don't have enough.
It would dedicate, it's not a dedicated line, so.
What we would have to do is dig up the harbor from the spray ground all the way up to Boston Post Road and put in a four-inch line.
And and then you still don't know if the county would let you.
Then after that, it's all up to the county, because now you're getting into chlorinated water and chemicals. We need an engineer to run that system.
You can't use saltwater, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, those, it it's not like we could take advantage of Long Island Sound, you can't use saltwater for those pieces of equipment.
Our water's brackish, not ideal, um it's not like a cruise ship, any saltwater certain. New York City. Or maybe on certain island pools that are saltwater, but yeah, it's not practical.
And if and if the beach is closed for health reasons.
Correct, yeah, when you. You know, I think the filtration thing is, it'd be wonderful, but it could, the health department needs to sort of depth, we don't have depth. And you need. Big area.
Need holding time, you need the, you need, as you as you recycle water, you need to hold it for a long time.
And also, you know, people tell me, oh, you have UV light systems, doesn't do it, I don't see a pool that runs on UV light, so. Any questions about more running?
It sounds dumb.
Basketball court upon upon Harbor Island.
It's next time.
The basketball court is a separate piece of a future capital, I mean, because.
So we did, it it was, because it was in the, it was in our um our packet, so I was just wondering, are we just skipping over it, are we gonna do?
No, that's, so so what we did.
Oh, maybe I'm looking.
The camp, children were playing basketball on the pavers and on the brass. So what we did is we kind of built a half-court basketball. Area for the campers out near the bandstand, just so they could play basketball on it. Kickball, box ball, whatever the campers wanna do on a blacktop surface, that's the basketball court that's getting painted in this proposal.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
You paint the half-court?
Yeah, yeah, cuz it prolongs the blacktop. Uh we could do multiple line paintings on it, they don't have to set up cones every day, everything will be down. I mean, since we built that court, that temporary court, I mean, it was probably the biggest used. Spot other than the beach and the spray ground.
So we do have in our plan, Waylani, um behind the parks building, behind Jeff's maintenance building. After the county pier project is completed, to move in and do basketball courts there and and expand our volleyball courts, cuz we make. A lot of money on volleyball, yeah.
So we're moving a basketball court for kids near where you have that huge tower.
Yeah, the tower, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not in this panel for vocal, but it will be next year.
Is there another location?
For a basketball court or basketball courts?
It will, it, could there be another location outside of that space?
It's not right near that tower, so. If you go into harbor, you know where we have the concerts? You know where our parks garage is? You know, that little muddy area that no one uses?
Yes.
Where the where the.
Where I found you during the the auto show?
Yes.
Got it, okay then.
A very under underutilized area of harbor. That if we do take that area for basketball courts, it doesn't affect.
Got to anything, got it.
Doesn't affect baseball, soccer, nothing.
You're right, I was just trying to. Grab the scope, cuz I'm like.
That tower's actually behind my building a little more closer to the water, it's not. It's in close proximity, but we're not right under it, if we if we.
You guys are.
But we are.
Which is dangerous.
Florence. Florence Park. So Florence Park, we are looking to do a total renovation. Uh total equipment replacement, site prep. Tear out and redo tennis courts. Tear out and redo basketball courts, tear out and redo the walkways and the curbing. Add pickleball courts and replace all electrical fixtures with LED fixtures and. Um furnishings. Right now, there's no, there's only, I think, three benches around the playground. Equipment, uh it's not even close to what we need over there, uh besides the harbor, Florence Park is our other most popular park. Um if you looked at the fixtures I sent around, there's a lot of safety issues in Florence Park. Uh trees uplifting curves, uplifting walkways, uplifting the tennis court. The tennis courts aren't really used, because there's so many tree roots under them, they're all cracked, the basketball court's sinking, it's cracked. It already went through a renovation about ten years ago?
No. No, it was it was same thing.
About ten years ago, uh they didn't do it the right way, they kind of just filled in. The basketball court that was there and painted new lines on it, they never redid the drainage, they never took care of any of the tree issues. Um there's a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of tripping hazards for little kids, a lot of kids ride their scooters and their bikes. And skateboard in that park, and it's just a recipe for disaster.
A lot of kids learn how to ride that bike there.
Yes. Uh also, we're gonna do ordered rubber surface. Um that would need the most amount of work, because we have ordered rubber surface there already. It wasn't properly installed the first time, so when you go on that playgrounds. Um number one, the rubber surface is lifting up, and number two, there's a lot of sinkholes underneath the rubber surface. That when you step on it, it kind of creates a uh a fall and you end up, you know, falling flat on your face. Uh the equipment's probably from two thousand, late nineties, two thousand?
Two thousand one, maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of the rubber surfacing started to peel away, uh there's metal that's exposed that heats up in the sun. That, you know, is hot to little kid's skin.
So so I wanna say something about the uh courts, the tennis courts, that Jason and I had a conversation during COVID. I had to kick out private contractors, quote unquote, uh for doing uh programming there without an approval. I don't hide anything. But um Jason and I have talked about potentially a programming, the tennis courts, to make sure that. Um we add that program to the community, I understand that we have sport time and all of that stuff, but. Um we have talked about that, uh up to and including an additional tennis court that's at the Harbor Island Park sometime.
Yeah, the pickleball's been a big thing, so if we wanna give school purpose court, um I get a lot of requests. Two main ones, believe it or not, are can you please build pickleball courts and then can you please refurbish Florence Park? Out of all the things I get, those are the two main ones, for some reason, pickleball and refurbish Florence Park.
Yeah, I hear about Florence Park.
Um yeah, it's in rough shape, so uh. As part of that component, we talked about possibly in the future, having some sort of tense membership like they do at more market. Small year pass, yeah, it's scheduled.
That's a contractor, right?
Yes, they do a RFP.
Yeah, they do an RFP.
Uh so just thoughts on how we can utilize the park better.
As a, as would that be a revenue source?
That would bear, if if we saw desire to to do that in that markets, but there's options.
Um I I'm after just reviewing this, it's for the basketball court that's adding one other court corrected, it's refurbishing or re.
Currently, we have two courts, those to be ripped out and redone, start to finish.
Yeah.
And then adding an additional basketball court, which would give us three full-size courts. And then adding an additional three pickleball courts. Opposite of tennis, this way people could still play tennis and people could still play pickleball without battling over two courts.
And I my only, I don't know if it was, I she didn't know, but I know, for example, I I I love this, there used to be this kind of padding under the. The backboard or the rim, is that something we could, that we would purchase, or like them, when they redo the court, they would go in and install?
No, that would, that would all be covered under the the new.
Okay.
But what happens is you have kids who think they could dunk. And they grab onto it and they don't realize it's foam, it's only held in by, you know, little quarter inch screws.
It just rips right off.
That was one of those cases.
And my question for Jason, could we pro, cuz I know we're talking about programming for tennis, like could we program those courts if they're after they're redone?
I know that's for Jason, but I I I would love to.
Yeah, I just think we should, if we're looking to program and do something with pickleball or or tennis at those courts, why I. I think we should look to do the same thing, it was three, it'll be three courts back to back.
These guys live in that neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, my question is that could we program those courts once that is done?
Correct, that's what I was getting at, when I said that we've been working internally on, if we can get these courts done. Here's some sort of fee schedule on how we can program them, um.
Basketball.
We could do it and go basketball.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do a youth basketball league there, along with Columbus, you know, cuz Columbus' basketball court's really nice, it's lit, we could use both parks, so yes.
Thank you. You know, we talk about revenue all the time, Jason and I, and the facilities that we have, I could. If I could put toll on the roads, I'd put toll on the road, so so what what happens is, it's impossible for us to. Program facilities that low and are in that condition, right, we just can't do it, so we've been. We've been held up by by being able to do that.
I'll put it this way, so we don't um internally, when we bring this to Jerry, he says, great, are you gonna make money? Is there gonna be revenue, you know, so so like, it's what we think about. Look for ideas to uh bring down the costs in the long term.
And then also, uh the, I notice it's like we're improving the lights, is this just like the lights along the path, or is this the lights around the court? Or will they be adding lights around the court?
So there's two different costs here, one one's the Florence Park Improvements page and the other one's the CIT. That's for discussion of. Lights on the tennis court, lights on the basketball courts, lights on the pickleball courts, uh lights over the playground. Uh adding more lights, because there's some dark spots in there.
Yeah.
And Mayor Murphy can contest to that, he scared me one night when the power was out, you know.
You scared him?
Well, I'm scared of the dark, that's why.
I walked in on him when he was trying to fix it.
Yeah, yeah, so. The reason.
I had my meter, I was ready to go.
The reason why there's two pricing is, number one, you never know what you're gonna find out when you start ripping stuff apart, and number two, I left the option in there. To expand the infrastructure of the boat, whether that's a couple solar lights. Regular LEDs. Or simple walkway lights.
Yeah. Like walkway lights from the bottom up, you mean?
Yeah, so like around the playground, we could install lights on the walls, around the front, near the little electrical closet.
And so some of that idea is because we wanna reduce lead, cuz we have. We have um. Houses surrounded the entire park, so we wanna reduce the the light lead or the the light pollution that people would be upset about.
But you don't want them up high.
No, if we can't, if we.
And we want to avoid it, we want them shining in the park instead of.
Out to the.
Out as windows.
Into everybody's, similar to the Harbor Island Park LED project, if you notice, there's no bleeding, you can't even tell they're on. That's your bad, so the ecology's gone.
And I know we're removing trees, are are is the goal over the time for like us internally to replant and. To put different types of trees, so they don't rip up the court in the future?
We we always, we always and will always plant trees. Uh the problem is, you know, however many years ago those trees were planted, they planted them right on top of the courts. We will rebuild the park and then plan where we should plant trees. Where they won't interfere with our infrastructure.
That's true, man, if you have some, so in other parks, if you've seen planters with trees in them, then because they don't wanna ruin the circuit.
No, it's great.
That's one idea, but also if we need shade at some point, because I think the intent was was to, you know, put inventions of just putting trees near the. Surfaces so that they can pull them down, but for us, it just doesn't work, we can put shade structure if we need it.
Cuz we've lost a lot of trees in that park over the last few years.
Yeah.
It's a tough environment.
As.
Wet feet and everything.
As we as we plan ahead of, is there is there um. Uh we have an eye toward putting some equipment for um senior citizens for 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 uh. You know, so something that that that. So older people could use it, that is not sort of, you know, that is designed for them.
This Florence Park project is basically from the track. To the playground. It it, besides the lighting, it had nothing to do with around the track. Later on down the road, it would be nice to see like a fitness um trail, trail.
Yes.
So a couple uh weighted, body-weighted pieces of equipment around the walking path, because. A lot of people use the walking path just for exercise, in the park for exercise. I think it's a perfect area, just to drop a couple pieces of equipment in around the track. For people who wanna work out and use their own body weight.
That be appropriate also at a Harbor Island?
That would be appropriate at Harbor Island, along the seawall, I would believe, this way it's out of the way of the playing fields. This way people who walk around the seawall could stop at each station and, you know, do what they wanna do and. And it's not really, it's not really taking away space from anything else.
Yeah.
So they can be temporary stations around the seawall, seawall's gonna have a major.
Yeah, I know, I I remember that.
Cuz I know, you know, periodically, it comes up, you know, exercise equipment for old people. And and then then it then goes away.
It doesn't, and it hasn't gone away, it's just. The users of the park, each park is different.
Yeah.
Jefferson Park experiences a lot of young children, not a lot of seniors go to that park, there's no reason to put. Equipment in that park.
Okay.
Columbus Park, Harbor Island, Florence Park, I could see those parks being used with some equipment stations around the parks. Stanley Avenue Park is another thing, young children, I don't really see seniors going there to work out. Um it's basically the bigger parks with the walking space that I was imagining putting equipment in.
This isn't touching the field either, correct?
This is not touching the field.
So so those stations are four to six thousand dollars each, and not a lot of money, but it can add up if you wanted to add up to multiple parks.
Sure. All right, I mean, I I just remember that uh that in at several forums, it came up and everybody's, everybody loves the idea and then I don't see it.
But it's something we could buy one piece of equipment for, put it in the park, it's not, it's not something we have to do as a group.
Okay.
Do one piece of equipment per year. And in four or five years now, you have four or five pieces of equipment around the track.
I would like to test it in Florence, see how well it does, monitor, check it out, see what kind of use it's getting, prove the need and then expand it.
Florence Park.
Yeah, I think the two biggest thing our team has for our pickleball and a flat surface at the harbor that they can walk around, that, you know, the harbor has a lot of pave, but.
It's not always flat.
Not always flat.
The only. Uh is this your last, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, so my only um suggestion would be. When things are, because I understand that a lot of these things are just really need-based, like not even a want, um. When you start thinking about things for the future, I just, I hope that we're keeping our teens in mind, because we, they do not have space. Or anything, we have, we're we're catering to a, and rightfully so, a a younger age, uh in like infant toddler uh. Elementary, maybe middle school, but our teens in high school age, we don't have anything for them. So what we we are thinking and we are being creative, as you have been, as both of you have been. You know, just really thinking about our our teenage um age youth.
I I agree with you, I just don't think that's gonna be solved via playground.
Yeah, no, it it could be, but it could be.
Indoor space, huge.
Yeah.
Different outdoor activities in open spaces.
Of course, but you guys know the area best, when it comes down to rec and and the park usage and any other spaces, you know, you guys know best. Cuz this is your job, so I'm just saying, keep it in mind and really thinking creatively um on how to do that.
I just think, I agree, I just think these things have, these improvements need to be tied to like increased programing, cuz I feel like if we, if you said like you're. Nobody's gonna wanna run a program for tennis at Florence, okay, the way the court looks, or wanna basketball program there, I think as we kind of. Renovate, make these things like state-of-the-art improved, like we should be really pushing to find and find and develop those partners now. To kind of get the interest of knowing that, hey, this is a really great kind of outdoor court, like what programming could you offer here through the village?
So so a lot of it is just having the facilities and creating, right, some stuff for that. Um but yeah, I don't really talk to them about the designs around, what it looks like, what colors. What facilities, I truly don't talk to them about that, I just talk to them about the payback. Of the funding and the bonding, as well as the future rest, that's all we talk about. Um a lot more with Jason than with Jeff, with Jeff, I talk about other things that cause money and save money, but. Um clearly, that's what it's all about. We just can't, like we just can't do it, right, I've asked many times about the Warren Avenue tennis court. We just can't, like we just can't do it, right? I've asked many times about the Warren Avenue tennis court. But it's, how do I set up programming on one court when you just can't really.
You can't see it from the street.
And you can't see it from the street and it's it's just by itself out there.
Oh.
So it's hard, it's a hard situation for us, uh without the multiple courts and the um facility being repeated. At a location so we can have an actual program with multiple people.
Warren is by me, right? So what can, at some point, can y'all do something, um because there's a lot of people use that as a track and it's so uneven. But just keep it in mind.
It's in mine, I've had a conversation with Gino before, uh we were trying to get it done when we did all the paving, it just couldn't happen. But it's it's on the list and it's on the radar to be redone, resurfaced.
If uh Mayor Murphy was definitely, because he was quite a quote, we partnered with Florence Park for paving on track. And that's how we got Florence Park on, maybe we can do that again and as it happens.
We tried for this year, it just the timing didn't work.
As long as it's on the radar.
This is kind of all uh base a little bit, but. Didn't, I mean, when you guys, you folks who grew up here, when you in high school, did and you, uh because Lilani made me think about this when she talked about teenagers. Did they have dances and stuff for the kids or?
Yes, we had a lot of different options when we were teenagers, whether between large one or ma- Village of Marmanic, nothing town really didn't have anything. We had the cold. We had also school dances, which they don't allow anymore. Just fear of a lot of things happening in the world and that they just stopped and things just stopped and right, you know, understandably so. But it just became, and then when we didn't have a movie theater, that just took away a lot, um. You had a lot of things for the teenager, and then you had you had spaces like the CAP Center and that had a lot of teen programs. Um that we don't necessarily have, and then we just, we slowly over time have get taken away, we've taken away and not replaced.
But when we do have, let's say we do have an indoor space in the next few years, right? There'll be courts there, there'll be synthetic turf, there'll be areas where people can potentially, you know. Exercise and use the facility, but there'll also be rooms full of computers and screens.
Right, and then places for.
Have that, because it's not, not gonna attract the teens that also wanna do that recreationally and socializing. With that kind of uh with that kind of environment as well.
Right, because you have a lot of teens who are interested in gaming, you have teens who are interested in art, you have, you know, we need a multipurposeful space.
So we just need the space to do it.
Yeah, I get it.
Those two things, in my team, we do pretty much anything we could dream of, we just need a little bit more.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talking with a lot of time.
Thank you.
Is that it for capital? Very, very uh hopeful, you know, I think we spent a lot of years atrophying.
So Mayor, I forgot about the, on the regular meeting, uh there's another vehicle for the building department, I'm not sure if you wanna. Do that now, and then there's phase four, yes, phase four. Talk about the docks, talk about the plants, talk about the fishing pier idea.
So this year, I wanna start phase four for the dock rebuild, we were planning on doing this in six, but I should be able to actually get it done in five. With this being four, next year I'll just do the fishing pier and the ramp docks that I could be doing once left. Cause this year we're gonna do sea dock, capoeira dock and S dock.
So once again, Jeff, it's material only?
It's material only because we're building a docked house.
Is pressure treated? Good night, Carl.
Good night, Carl.
Thank you very much.
He had planned to come yell at us and he decided that he's satisfied.
And the 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 recent storm didn't do that much damage to the dock?
No, we only lost one one dock in the last one.
That was the end, at the end of the year, that's a problem.
Oh, the one that went prowled the wall?
One that, it's the one that the gangway, the hand that gangway lands on, that's the one.
It got banged up pretty bad.
Was it old?
Yeah, that was one of the oldest.
What it, debris hit it, what happened? Yeah, it was on like a fire hose there.
And then the fishing pier, which is something, obviously, because it's um. Not rented or we don't really bring charge for it, that's on the last portion of it, so that'll be phase five.
It gets a lot of use. It's nice, they got a little uh little hawk fin thing going down there. Thanks, Jeff. The docks look great.
So the good news is that the last three capital improvement projects that we presented last year. One of them is complete, it was a renovation of the building apartment, so that's huge. The second one, oh sorry, that one is complete, but we still have a phase two that we discussed before. Which is the storage, right now currently the. Storage for the building department for our copy files is in a different location. We were considering bringing it upstairs to be edible, but I don't think that's viable for, so it's still in the making.
So is that six fifty wholesale?
Yeah.
Correct. So right now, that entails a lot of logistic, our folders have to be brought to one sixty nine Mount Pleasant. In a car and then be brought up upstairs, right, so it's a lot of logistic involved. Ideally, we would plan for the phase two of the capital improvement project to be able to bring to this building. But since we are planning on renovation, that is on hold for me, fingers crossed. Um the item number two, that we had the capital improvement project for security camera, that is also complete. So thank you for that, and the number three is for our fleet, we are slowly replacing our cars. The average age is fifteen years old on the cars. So we are looking for one new car by the end of the year, which is an electric vehicle, replacing one that would be.
He has an option at all, yeah.
Yes, so that's what we have to present for now, everything else.
The car that you're replacing, is it two thousand seven?
Yes, that's.
So you use the, you're the predominant user of the electric car, explain a little bit about some of the use and how we've liked it so far.
Thank you, Jerry. I am the first person using an electric vehicle in our department and it was a very positive change. Not only because we not having to charge this car with the fuel, right, so it's completely. Um free for the village, one of the stations we didn't have to pay anything to recharge. That car is free for the village, and on top of that, we feel we're being able to bring that to the environment, so there's zero pollution. Um it's all positive, it runs perfectly and it does what it needs to do, right, we. Are extremely happy with that change.
So your average charging, how many times a month or a week?
So it's about two hundred and eighty miles that we can run with the car in a good range. If you think about it, that would be every other week for the charge. Pretty significant, the change will be a big impact as we go forward with this.
Then you're not buying fuel.
And we're not buying fuel, we have one station down, so hopefully that station will be fixed soon and I believe the. The chief also uses an electric vehicle, I'm happy with that, it's it's extremely. Healthy, to know that yours.
We will have one station put in for the vehicle.
Exactly, that's what's up. So in order to prevent that we will run out of battery, we try to charge it as often as possible. Because of the emergency situations, we try to have it and charge it as often as possible. And that's it, that's all I have to present.
Uh one thing, if I may, Mayor, um today, today I was, I just happened to be talking to a a business owner who's preparing a business on Marmanic Avenue. And uh he was lamenting the fact that the Conadusid was taking some time getting three phase power to his business. I said, oh, it's too bad, and he says, volunteer totally, but the building department in the village has been awesome. And I, and I'm like, whoa, because I'll tell you, in 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 the year I've been doing this, that was not what I used to hear. When I first started, so so i- it it was, it made me smile, you know, I mean, you don't, you just get. He was just thrilled.
Thank you so much for that, that means a lot. Still, it's teamwork, including me doing that by myself, not only this staff has been working extremely hard, but. One thing I tell everybody is that this can only be done thanks to the support of our village manager. Mayor and the trustees, it's really a teamwork that is only viable thanks to all of you, and it makes a big difference to work. Uh in this environment, so I appreciate all the work is worth.
Well, at least one, one person you helped is was delighted.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate you. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, we know the the one item that the chief is still here for uh is the K nine insurance after retirement. Uh Chief, do you have new information for us?
So I believe he has spoken up to the island meeting and. I was going to do some investigating about um some of the questions that you had had.
We need to invest into Mike's.
legality, if the judge provided health insurance for. K nine officers answer, they have uh they retired and. There's actually no authority in the village to do that. You know, they say this, it was dog, it's only one dogs and those dogs. Go with dogs and get the school or property. And just as you couldn't give away a village vehicle and then pay for insurance for it. You can't lawfully. Pay for insurance for the dog after the dog has. Fire is no longer in service. I mean, only the exception, but even else, the village can't give away money. If there was some contractual basis for doing so, is the only way you could do that.
So we do not consider K nine's employees when they're in service? What are they? What are you considering?
So.
Equipment?
However, they are considered a K nine partner or a member of service when they are working, so.
Service.
Yep.
Okay, so and you mentioned other um in in other communities, people have done this.
So right, so what what I looked at, I looked at four different communities. So out of the four different communities, there's one out of the four that pays after they retire. And there are two of the four that have insurance for their active, and that's just based on four municipalities that I've looked at.
And and where was that one municipality?
That pays after they retire?
Yes.
Uh Harrison.
So they found the authority.
They, yeah, they did.
Have you suggested, so that would have to be something that would be part of P B A negotiations, a part of the contract? That they would have to negotiate that as part of the contract.
I was I was suggesting that that it might be a a might be a job for the P B A.
What you could do, if you wanted to, was make it a contractual requirement. For the officer who is the K nine's partner to take care of the K nine after the K nine retired. And you can, I I believe they get a stipend in the election.
So, right, so while they are working, they get a stipend for the care and the maintenance of the dog, once they retire. They they do not get any of that.
As a term of the, as a condition of getting the stipend, while the K nine is in service. The officer would have to obligate himself, herself, to take care of the dog after the dog get retired. And the village could agree to pay to ensure that we'll part the contract with the officer.
With the officer. And and we wouldn't care where the dog lives, I mean, as long as the officer would 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 take care of the details on it, right?
What once an officer, you know, is a K nine officer and has that that dog as a partner.
Yeah.
They they're bonded, you cannot, even if the officer tried, you can't give that dog to another K nine officer because they bonded with that officer and. The the officer would never not take his.
How is, how is that officer chosen? Is that a, is that a volunteer position or it's like, you know, they say, okay, I would like to step up and be. Um the officer who works with the K nine dog.
So what we do, what I do is I have interviews.
Okay.
Ask for anyone that's interested, it's minimal to me, if they're interested, and then I have interviews, it's something I can say, I believe it's the best fit.
So we we could, we could make that part of the next contract going forward, maybe if we want to, when Gray Claude that, would that be something we could do?
You need to have to agree.
Is, can the, are we obligating the police officer to pay for the insurance or are we, can we obligate the village? I think that's the Leslie Lani's.
He already does, right, yeah.
But as part of the compensation for service while he was in service.
Insurance could go on.
Providing the village provides a church, so it would be part of the whole.
Okay, I think that should be added.
Why should it be a burden on the officer uh to, if the dog, to to care for the dog, that's 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 served the village, I mean. It would make sense, that would make sense.
So you can, unless, unless you put into the collective bargaining agreements, anything that breaks state or federal law, you can put anything into a collective bargaining agreement. There's a lot of creative things that go into collective bargaining agreements, so there wouldn't be a uh. There wouldn't be anything holding you back from considering something like that, whether I'm gonna do it or not, I don't disclose that information, but the reality is. You can, you can add creative things into the C B A without worrying about.
Okay, alright, then let's leave it there.
And then of course, we just come down to identifying a plan, how much we really would want to spend per year after that dog retires, and again, knowing that a dog. Hopefully and hopefully, from eight to ten years, a dog is working, so then anytime after that, a normal lifespan for a dog. You know, after that would be, you know, maybe three or five years, so that's how long you would have to incur that cost if you decide to do it.
I think we should, what's the next steps?
So the current contract is, doesn't expire until two thousand twenty five, so negotiations start. Usually at the beginning of that year, so probably in January of two thousand twenty five is when those negotiations would start.
Okay, thank you.
See, uh one A is gonna be held.
Thank you, guys.
One B. Let's see, we just did. Uh fireman's carnival parade, manager's office, this is just that. Anybody have any problems with the dates?
Request different dates, different year.
It's on a, it's a, it's not a Tuesday night this year.
Really?
A little funny.
Yeah. I don't think it'll limit the attendance.
Everybody loves it.
Alright, everybody five of the times and dates.
And it doesn't affect camp, right?
No, it won't, because it's, it's a. It starts and can't get shifted over.
Yeah, okay.
So this, the parade here is Friday, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Fourth of July is a Thursday, but the parade is a Friday and it's usually on a Tuesday.
Yeah.
Uh records, management's fees. Jerry, third-party scanning service.
I can, I can, apparently in this year.
Under two C.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically um, uh, when we need to have items sent out for copying, we're not, we see, we're not being compensated for that by the applicant. This would establish a fee for the actual cost of production and our cost for the personnel spending time to oversee and inform everything's done.
It's kind of, yeah. Um, so sometimes the department receives requests from people who's not necessarily nearby. So they ask us to send everything on a pen drive or on an email. And we remember you to provide the information as per the fact that we can't charge us for your estate. We're allowed to charge for the box. So this service would be, it would be directly with the company or scanning company. But they will be a few person manage the sending out and receiving it there. Because we will have to check if that box comes back with all of the items that were sent out. So that tracking is what we must be, what we must clarify those.
Yeah, I think that's what you've proposed.
This for foil requests?
It's not for requests. And we call it a request review form. Now, one example, this is started because we had a request on a property file. There is a total of five boxes. So if we were laying out five full boxes the size of this table, full of documents and drawings. So it takes someone probably a week to go through that scan and save and drive.
Nor this is um, what about making the both open permits? In that example, there's part of that.
If it's thirty-five dollars per copy or thirty-five dollars per like request as a fee?
One thing for, for those. We had, we had a facility in our community that had a lot of open permits. And there was a lot of stuff to go through. So the entity needed to review, review all those files. Like this is the thing.
Correct. That's the same one. Yes. And so they had one architect come over, review everything, but now there's someone else who needs to see those documents. That's a total of five boxes. So they will pay the company directly. We're not worried about it. But one thing that we feel is fair is that we're gonna have to talk to this company, verify everything they're taking out, and then verify everything that is coming back.
And it's perfectly legal to do this? I mean, if they make a foil request, we have to provide it. We can just say.
Alright, so for requests is different. This was not a for, but this was a request from that entity to work with us to close out all that.
Yeah.
Would it work on a for request too? I don't know.
Well, no, for a for request, if we had to send it out for copying, the, uh, the requestor, it's either twenty-five percent or the actual cost of production. So this would be the actual cost of production. It's what they're paying, they're repaying now. Uh, on, but we're asked for is the administrative fee to manage the process.
No, and, and I, I know that in the past, there have been a lot of files placed because when they were scanned, they were, I mean, I have used the files upstairs.
Yeah.
And found incredibly incorrect documents. I mean, I just have, just giving them back to staff, saying this isn't the wrong file.
Right.
So.
What is the inside of the cost of copying it? And it's legal to charge, like, Bob is here to confirm what I'm saying, Bob. It's legal to charge for copies in scanning.
Charlie, did you do this in Vernon or did you need us in Buckle Hope at all?
Vernon.
Yes. They did it in Mount Vernon.
It's, it's, we will charge actual cost, not staff time.
Hmm.
Review, actual cost of reproduction.
Hmm. So this is, so what you're charging for is a fee to inventory before and after to make sure everything's back.
Inventory fee, yes. Making sure that when you receive that box back from this third-party company, everything is there.
Not sure that's.
That doesn't seem.
If you use the charge of something, you don't have to go to the scanner to take it out, take it.
Correct. And they won't pay this company directly. We won't be involved.
But not, you can't charge a fee for your staff to review the documents before you're ready.
I understand. Okay. So that, that means no, so we can't charge five dollars a flex fee to make sure that those files go off perfectly and come back.
Are you charging that admission to you?
They will pay this company directly.
And we charge that admission to the company.
Correct. You're being a duty fee. Put me on the fee schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Totally. That's, that was it. We got the answer. Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay. Your bills, except for the ever, there was a fee for reproduction.
No problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate the sentiment though.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, small grants funding application posters. Malani?
Oh, yes. Um, so this is something that came up to the board that we already agreed upon in terms of um setting aside a certain amount of money for um for individuals who are uh, who have been flooded, who were, are not able to meet the, the um, the requirements, if whether it's income or something, it has to be income uh, or uh, income-based uh requirements by the state. But since the state is also um going through their transitions of merging departments and people literally just, and this was like supposed to be the aftermath of Ida, but now we have the aftermath of Ophelia, and people literally are just recovering, still recovering from what hap- has happened um to their homes. Uh, I would like to start the process now of creating an application and uh based upon, usually what people do is do it based upon income level, which we usually service low income uh, low income individuals. But with all the damage that has been done to uh people in this community, their income could say one thing, but they're actually, what they have in the bank is one, is a different thing. Especially with the amount of money that they have been shelling out to repair their homes constantly. Um, and I believe that we should be able to give the um, uh, we should be able to uh put forth this application as ASAP so that they can help uh take care of their homes and their families. So um, I kind of went over this with Jerry. Um, and this is only for residential um properties um and the individuals living in those, those spaces. Um, so we, the schedule or what I'm proposing is twenty grants at ten thousand dollars each um with the a hundred percent AMI or below, and sixteen grants for five thousand each, thirty percent AMI below. Any questions?
No. Sounds like a good idea. What do you guys think?
That that would be our money?
Our money is already been set aside. Yes, village money. It's our money to do this.
And, and we can, and this is, and we're allowed to do this.
Yeah.
And how it'll be administered?
Yeah, that's my. Guidelines are very loose as far as, uh, there's no way to administer except first come, first served on their income.
I mean, we're, we're allowed to do it because it's, it's something we can do with ARPA money. That's why, right?
Yep.
Because it's, it's, we don't usually give out grants to individuals.
Yeah, so to, you know, because you've been tracking it, right, when we first thought it, Dan and I first thought through about ARPA, like, it's very restricted.
Hmm.
Can't do this, can't do that. So many communities, many elected officials complained about that because of all the handcuffing. The proper rules have, have opened up significantly. And, and in this regard, um, you know, it's easier to be able to distribute money uh for moderate and, and low-income individuals. Um, so it would be a first come, first served um based on the number of applications that we get. That's really how we would distribute it. We'd have to make sure that they qualify for the AMI. They'd have to disclose information to us.
Would we be creating the application or is there an application itself that we could use?
I think we'd have to create it. I don't think there's a standard application that would.
No, no, we would have to create.
Has any, do we know if anybody's tried this yet? I mean, and was, it was on the list of things we could do.
Yes, it was. And so the reason Leilani and I talked a little bit about this, first of all, because Leilani kept asking what's going on, what's going on with the state money. And the state, because they merged the office of um, the governor's office of storm recovery and the uh office of um resiliency, home, home resiliency and communities, um, they've kind of gone a different direction with that forty-one, forty-two million dollars that the state set aside, but which thirty million is supposed to come to our testing. They've decided to designate, not necessarily through the RFP, but designate non-profit five-on-one type entities to work with the state and the community to give out that money for rental assistance, rental reimbursement, as well as replacement of some of their issues, some of the issues that were created by the, like.
You know, a lot of the communities I've seen have basically used their ARPA money for capital. It's, it's, again, low-hanging fruit, easy to do, allowed per the rules. So it's a, it's, it's.
We have to limit, I mean, we have to be specific about what the improvements can be.
It, it, it seems a great idea. Uh, to get some of that money to actual people.
If a property owner spent ten thousand dollars re-sheet rocking and, and rebuilding their basement, it goes to that.
I think be retroactive. We can reimburse them for things that they've done.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if they had to replace bedrooms, dressers, urinals, furniture, that's also stuff. We're just looking to help them out a little bit with, these are not large sums of money.
But it's something.
Some of money if you have.
And not to be, yeah, not to be presumptuous. I imagine, you know, they would have to verify their costs. Like we verify, when we get grants, we have to provide these uh grant providers with copies of receipts, invoices, cancel checks. Or, you know, so they, they know that uh, that we, we would know that that's actually been paid for.
And, and when you say first come, first served, that would be uh, the, 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 the date of the, the loss and not necessarily when you received a uh, an application, right?
No, it's when I receive the application. So if I have twenty applications in five days and twenty, and application twenty-one comes in on the sixth day, I've run out of money. So I have to kind of vet them while I'm doing it and see at some point, we could get forty, fifty applications. And once we reach twenty, I don't have anything. I have to go by the date that they were submitted.
Seems like it could be a problem.
Yeah, so it's a little, but I don't have any other way of doing it.
You couldn't, you couldn't do it by, by, uh, you know.
I think the date of the loss will be exactly the same for many of these applications. It'll be the same exact date.
Or maybe the same two dates.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when can we expect the application to, the applications to start going out?
So, so Dan and I can work on an application that, that we can put in front of you to kind of maybe, you know, check around a little bit at the next meeting, and then shortly after that. Make some tweaks, improve about some things.
Right.
Uh, then I think we have to really like announce the application so it's fair.
Well, we have to, we have, I.
We're talking about it now. We should keep talking about it.
No, we have, this has, is not something that has not been talked about because we, I put it forth towards the board and we, you know, it's, but we can, yes, if we're gonna put it out, put it out through the newsletter and you can sit there and say, state that we are working on the application process, hoping to have it done by the end of the year. And that please, it's, it is on a first come, first served basis. So yes, I guess I'm agreeing with what you're saying, but um.
And maybe, maybe uh, a specific date when the, when the form goes up and is available.
Yeah.
So, so that everybody has the same starting, starting point.
But, but no, I think Mark's point is, we keep talking about it, but that date is announced.
Mm-hmm.
And then.
Then, then, you know.
Then it starts, spends life.
Mm-hmm.
Got it, got it.
I don't know whether it's, I mean, Bob, did you, did you have something? You just looked. You, you look like you were gonna say something. So do we, I don't think, do, could we, if it's too many, do we consider like a lottery? If it's, I mean, what if you get forty-one, what if, what if you get three more grants than you can have? Then you can do the first time.
And ask for a little bit more funding to make sure that we make sure everybody that in need and not just people who are trying to grab, like if I put an application in, it should be rejected. So those kinds of.
Is this something we can consistently budget for?
Right, yeah, but it should be rejected. I'm not that person in.
We can consistently budget for them, but could we set that each fiscal year?
A lot of giveaway money, right? I mean, so.
Well, that, that, I think that becomes an issue because uh, right now, it's allowed with the ARPA funds. We're using our own money to provide direct financial assistance to a third party. That would be your gift to funds territory, I'd imagine, but that's it.
But, but understand that there's a little bit of ARPA money that probably may not get spent exactly the way we want. Um, so if we're working on.
Is this something that the county, like that we can work with the county that when our pod is done and they have a, a assistance program where they can go do this?
We can approach the county, but I have no, I haven't like.
Okay.
The county likes to distribute money, funds that they get from the state.
Yeah.
The word distributing fund that we receive from another. Another level.
We'll be distributing, so reviewing some of the resolutions already approved for the use of ARPA funds. If the board wants to revisit those funding decisions, that's, that's within your prerogative.
Well, Leilani, Dan will have a draft form, draft application on November thirteenth, if we promised that already.
Thank you.
Actually, that does bring up a subject about our meeting schedule for November.
Okay, uh. Proposed local law leads suspicion of state notice requirement.
Super session, what is this?
Damage basically doesn't change anything. Mirror pole, the border of the local law. Um, which changed the notice requirement.
Yeah, Mike's center.
The uniform notice requirement. For all of the, yeah, for all of the major spirits. In doing so, one of the provisions at the bottom of the page was that we, the board superseded the village law. I do it, I should the board's right. You do. That's a standard item we put into the superseding law. Shortly after the vote, the law gave the fact that I got a question from council and zoning board saying, hey, but what about the state law requirements? And I explained that there was a provision in the local law that superseded state law. What I realized then was that the supersession language would not be in the codified version. Because we put it in as a, as a different section in the local law. And as a result, a question could arise a year, two years, five years from now, which applied. So I thought it would be a good idea to amend the codified part to put the specific supersession language in the codified part in the code. Because in the future, there's no question that the notice requirements of state law have been superseded. Basically, what she did to supersede was eliminated the publishing in the newspaper requirement.
Right.
Uh, and you're, certainly you're absolutely entitled to use the power to do that. And you did it. The question here is just putting that in the code so that no one raises the question, has to look back to the local law years later, if a question arises as to whether you superseded or not.
Okay, so it's, oh, since suspended more or less, right?
Right.
Yeah.
It just protects it in the future from your question, your unnecessary question in the future.
Anybody have any questions, concerns?
No.
Uh, do you want to put this on the agenda for November thirteenth, scheduled public hearing?
It's him.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, I'm asking him.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, we know Bob does.
Uh, change order, three, three A, start with that. You got it. Press down a microphone, please.
We need the mic for the engineer.
So, the Mount Pleasant Avenue sidewalk and drainage improvement projects along Rofford Road today have been completed. The contractor, unfortunately, due to a couple of unforeseen substantive conditions, different conditions, and due to the compressed time schedule, uh, the work needed to be done prior to uh, American tour of our Labor Day, uh, incurred additional charges. Uh, and in addition, some of the subsurface conditions, uh, we had to pull for additional excavation, additional excavation work. Uh, so some, you're asking for a change order, you know, possibly ninety-four thousand dollars. Uh, then about thirty-three thousand of those dollars are due to the compressed time schedule. Uh and the majority of it was from uh different conditions that we had to, you know, excavate for the small water improvements. Uh in addition to that, and we have other extra quantities right here to.
Yeah, the, yeah, the change order request incorporates uh the items that you mentioned, the additional work. Plus, there were also exceedance of certain bid unit items uh during the course of of the project. I think uh that was around a hundred and sort of a hundred eighty five thousand. Which are all on the drainage side because that was the more complex and uh you know, once you, once you put a shovel in the ground, unfortunately, you 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 find more than you anticipate. Uh seems to be a universal content, you know, concept with a lot of projects.
All right, this is a FEMA project. Uh we are seeking reimbursement for the uh stormwater portion of this project through FEMA. Uh I've already had that public session, but we're working on segregating those costs. Uh and then we are also seeking reimbursement through the county uh for the CDBG portion of the sidewalk work.
Yep, it's uh two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars from Westchester County that that we will be seeking reimbursement for.
Basically, the money's been spent.
Yes.
Yeah.
Field change, right?
Field, yeah, field change.
Yeah, right, the the project was.
We knew what the project was, and so how come they didn't come to us to the change order while it was going on?
Because of the compressed time schedule, Laura, we had to get this job completed before. Uh it it was not that it was, we encountered a lot of uh poor soils.
And they knew, they knew it was compressed, but they, but there were field conditions that made it more complicated.
Yeah, I mean, that that was our overarching goal.
Yeah.
Were, and to make sure that this project got finished by the time school opened, and it literally got finished, I think, the day before the school opened.
Yeah. And that, and again, I mean, when I was out in the field, I guess, with the starting activate, yeah, we did, we were, you know, it was it was excited of the previous culverts. We found out why, there was a lot of soil under the, under, under the pipes that really had to get removed, so there was a lot of those quantities that they were overdue for additional excavation, additional back material back. We encountered um the actual old uh dry stacked stone head wall that used to be the old head wall to the creek that was actually at the help and Elliot Avenue that now is located way down between uh two residential structures. Uh so a lot of, just the different conditions.
No, and in some cases, and I'm I'm trying to find it now, they had, there were, there was like, there were changes requested by homeowners?
Uh, yeah. Now, due to the, a lot of the change orders were due to uh uh some of the sidewalk project on Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Hmm.
Uh the sidewalks uh that when they were uh installed, they really quite didn't match up properly with a lot of the driveways, causing a lot of cars, residents to be bottomed out, so we went back to go into some of the driveways to kind of make the transition a little smoother. Another change order was to uh uh replace four concrete slabs that uh with blue stone slabs, so we can maintain the blue stone sidewalk all on that Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Hmm.
Uh that that was another one.
Uh so uh, I'm sorry, Ford, but um I know how to handle the change order and the additional money with FEMA project because we we talk weekly and they want. We used to, we used to meet every other week, now we meet every week to try to close out the projects, but um and if we have change orders on CDBG, who handles that for us? County, with the state, or?
Well, I mean, there 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 there's not really a change order issue with the county because we're we're maxed out at the amount of money that we're gonna get from Westchester County, so.
So if the change order, they don't pay the other half?
Yeah, I mean, I I was uh waiting actually for uh the second payment to be authorized before I submit to Westchester County because the first requisition was actually slightly less than what we needed to hit that two seventy five. It's like five hundred and forty thousand, yeah, and I want it to be five hundred and fifty, I need to spend five hundred and fifty thousand first.
The um sidewalk issues, do the homeowners participate in, is there any fees involved in that at all?
Uh where the sidewalks have to be uh, drivers have to be adjusted?
No, no, no. Because, all right. I remember, you know, when when I had, when I would complain about a sidewalk in a neighboring community.
Yeah.
Uh that they would fix it and then I'd I'd get a bill for part of the uh repair.
Yeah, we 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 used to have a fifty fifty program in the village, but that hasn't been funded for for many years. Um you know, according to New York State law, um the homeowner is responsible for maintenance of a sidewalk uh on, in front of their property. But like, if we're replacing the higher sidewalk, then then we do it. Uh so it's it's uh that, I think that's uh where it came in with uh your, maybe your prior experience.
Yeah, and and I'm concerned about the, okay, if the new sidewalk doesn't match the old driveway, is that really on us to to fix?
Uh I guess, if, the way yes, in a way, it was kind of, you know, the the elevations really weren't working out properly. Uh we made some uh some additional changes, I guess, in that area, we got rid of the grass strip.
Yeah.
Also, that kind of made everything look a little bit more uniform, so I think there was a total of three driveways, one was the most severe, the other two was a little bit more uh not as severe. But yeah, this is something that.
Yeah. Yeah, we kind of created the condition by doing the project.
Okay.
Ideally, the goal is to have any of the prepared sidewalks by the, by the homeowners, so that wheelchair for someone with a walker.
We still got an effective section, and just let's uh move on a little bit. Uh three B awarding contract, village sidewalk improvements.
Yeah. Uh we, yeah, we had, we had the bid opening last Thursday, I spoke, I spoke with the board at the last work session. Uh the bids came in, the low bid was received from uh Peter J. Landy Incorporated, I think it was for about eight hundred sixty five thousand dollars and change. Uh Landy has done work in the village in the past. They did the last CDBG project, which was the new sidewalk on Waverly and uh uh East Prospect Avenue. They also constructed the uh pedestrian safety improvements at Fenimore and Prospect. Uh they were significantly lower than the uh second low bid, it was uh within the engineer's estimate, well, which is part of the agenda tonight. Uh and we are asking for, you know, in order to avoid uh asking for a change order, we're asking for uh fifteen percent contingency uh in the project uh to increase the total appropriation to one million dollars. Uh like I said, you never know what type of field changes uh you're gonna run into. Uh I suspect not gonna be as dramatic as what we experienced with the drainage project, but you know, it uh we do wanna just protect ourselves in case uh, in case that happens.
And Landy did the um, the river dredging in twenty eleven also.
Yeah, uh yes, he did.
Let's see that, right.
Part of this money, um four hundred thousand comes from the American Rescue Plan Act money, MARPA, and then a hundred and seventy five thousand change with the media that's taken away. There's a significant kick in with money that um we don't have to figure out how to pay for.
So the fiscal impact is a million, but it's a chunk of it is grant money.
Yeah, more than fifty percent. And he's pretty high or on the fifteen, but uh in something like this, um we're hoping that there's not major excavation. So when you do major excavation, you get all sorts of great things that goes on, the sidewalks a little bit.
Yeah. The fifteen percent contingency was something that we experienced similarly on just the Rock and Earth three. And I had asked for fifty percent, but uh again, I guess that most of those uh chain orders and the additional costs were due to the uh the major excavation work.
Almost a hundred and twenty five thousand in that contingency. One thirty five.
Okay, everybody found that?
Yeah.
All right, uh the next up is a professional service agreement to provide construction inspection services for contract, this this is for uh hiring somebody to oversee his work.
This is for uh a full session with the town of A S C J to perform the construction infecting, or the sidewalk work. But uh, those two patents completed honor about the separate fee, uh so we are getting a, a, a rest schedule. Uh so we're hoping this contract will start uh probably on or on November first. And I can then this will be construction inspection for all the side.
Thank you. Um transfer of funds for Harbor Island Park, associated with Buck Park.
So Mayor, we had uh paid the one third portion of Harbor Island Park near the uh Oak Park. And um um had a conversation uh with Laura, we have approximately uh thirteen thousand dollars in that fund. Marano's bill came in at just over twenty four thousand dollars. Uh speaking with Jeff, Jeff was asking us to leave just a small portion of money in there, so we're requesting an additional uh fourteen thousand five hundred two funds and pay for the uh the additional funds for Marano that that have paid the lot.
The paid the lot.
Yes.
But it's not Buck Park per se, this is just a a fortunate.
It was the first, the the last third of that Harbor Island parking lot closest to Buck Park.
So the long narrow one behind the sewage treatment plant?
Correct.
Which we're proposing to do with pervious surface, right?
Right, so I'll, I can explain if you like, uh that, we are also proposing to do pervious asphalt, but just the remaining portion of it. Uh we will see if we can, if through natural photography, slope the existing area, the new paved area towards it. If not, we could certainly do some drainage improvements in that area to slow everything towards the new pervious asphalt of the drains.
Catch that water on these pervious and add it to the.
But but this really isn't the park, the 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 part, the part of the dog park, this is just park.
Needed to be done to, in order to make the park usable.
Because um uh the people who park there are also people who, you know.
Lot of soccer park.
A lot of soccer park.
Yeah, soccer.
A lot of times you can't get parked there, because. So, all right. It's, so it's just really Harbor Island Park, the last bit of our goal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh I think that.
That's it.
That is for tonight's agenda. Uh first, I need a motion to close the work session. I need a motion to close the work session. All, all in favor? Aye. Now I need a motion to go into executive session. Uh we have two items on the executive session. Uh pre-committee is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to one oh five one F of the New York State Public Offices Law to discuss, uh it's the points about a decree committee. Uh and the other is litigation, United States versus Westchester Joint Water Works, Town of Paris and Village of Amerenick and the Town of Amerenick. Uh items, that that would be under one oh five one B. Uh I will make those motions. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
If you can go into the side room for this.
Can you just, a little voice.
I'll beat you there.
Honestly, it was. I mean, it was so hot.
Yeah, thank you.
So.
His wife, he's always sick. I think since he changed his hours to nine to five, I thought he's have a problem. Give the work six P M.
Are you? Are you kidding?
You're good?
Yeah. Are you allowed to have people? Oh, you told you. Joking. I was like, I'm just like. I'm not gonna hold you back, I haven't had a regular place in too long, I'm not gonna hold you back. We meeting in here? I think. I do. I'm clearly in trouble, no one's slaying everyone, my guy, January. Uh L M C, can you go? I'm gonna go to here from L M C. Yep, there's some pizza or whatever else you're looking for. Whatever did you order?
Did you order?
No.
Oh.
Pizza, we got a hot.
Okay.
No, it's, it's not. Oh, you don't have his glasses on.
Oh, yeah. They just removed that panel?
Oh, they, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I saw you give.
Yo, we were.
Two. Yeah, I have a, I have a. Very heavy.
Yes, yes.
It's like an old house.
And out there, I learned. Digging all out. Uh Board of Trustees meeting for October twenty third. Before we begin, uh I'd like to make a motion to end our executive session.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
Hi. The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, there are
exits.
There are emergency exits on my right, where the police officer is, and on my left, uh where Mr. Cutler is. Uh please turn off the sound on your phone, mute your phone or any other device that you have. Uh I need a motion to open the regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh open meeting, presentations, there were no presentations tonight, report from the village manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wrote this earlier and provided for the question. So tonight I'll discuss the next steps that we'll be taking um involving the Army for project, but I do need to share one item that is disturbing as far as um things that are going on in the Town of Amerenick when it comes to our poor and economically challenged residents. Residents that we share with the town, they're both village residents and town residents. And the people here so have been forced to make changes based on significant adjustments to the former town housing voucher program. Their community services that they provide, as well as, in my opinion, your overall outreach to our village residents who are in need. Does everyone know the town has sent? Oh, let's put it that way, I assume everyone knows that the town sent the housing voucher program to the state of New York after we expressed interest in managing it. Now, housing program participants for in our community which the town and the and large month do not have must deal with state offices and not a local office on the lawn. which the town and the and large month do not have, must deal with state offices and not a local office on the lawn. Additionally, according to the village code, the town was designated for over fifteen years to work with developers to market and place people who need affordable housing needs. That ceased when the Department of Community Services was disbanded and their employees laid off. The office is now focused on transportation and seniors, not the poor of our community. I guess poor people don't vote because everyone knows seniors do. Furthermore, the town has abolished, illegally, in my opinion, the border control. First hand, I know firsthand that the reason town administration did not think that there was any value in L M C media services due to cutting the cord uh, with cable TV. However, while many of us have cut the cord and we understand, I believe most of our senior residents have not, and in the future, I believe they will not have the ability to view town and village meetings once those channels go away. Cable TV stations for municipal events and meetings hopefully will be preserved in the village for as long as it can. And I hope that the Board of Trustees backs up that service for our seniors. As an aside, I also believe that future village of Maranick residents will be unable to view town meeting because when we have separate franchise agreements, you will not be able to see a town meeting if you live in the village and you will not be able to see a village meeting if you live in the town. That's too bad. Obviously, I'm upset about the town cutting services to our poor and our seniors since I know they have very few poor in their community. That impact, that impacts us the most because we're on need and from what I know, there are not many poor, which I say it again, in the town of Maranick or Village of Marchmont. On Friday, after talking to the Waverly Avenue Bridge Contractor, I learned that the town did not N O T fund police detail for traffic control for residents driving from Maranick Avenue School or the train station or driving from the town to the village. I know, and Mr. Sonoff and Chief DeRutha will confirm that traffic control aspects for this bridge project and included in the traffic control pan, plan, were included in every meeting as well as in the plan. Since Friday, we are actively working on a plan to remedy that oversight based on the emails between the mayor and the county supervisor. And I want to thank the mayor for being very strong in his position, and I appreciate that very much. In the meantime, until the town of Maranick funds the police traffic control, we will not have officers at the intersection. If it goes on too long, I will not have any choice, I will not, I will have no choice but to rescind the contractor's road open permit, which I discussed with the village attorney earlier today. Now for some better news. I'm happy to report that because of the pressure applied by Mayor Murphy and Trustee Giza Reed, we had a very successful Army Corps meeting, which included the state D E C and the county of Westchester on Friday. Also, very impactful at the meeting, I want to thank the representatives from Senator Gillibrand and Senator Schumer's office and their insistence of getting the Army Corps to move ASAP with a new estimate for the project and to start that work. We are going from an eighty-eight million dollar project to somewhere around a hundred and twenty-five million dollars deep in friction. I want to explain the successes that that be. While the design is complete for the removal of the Ward Avenue Bridge, we, the village, decided to work with the county for funding to remove the bridge under our oversight. Additionally, I have been directed to remove the Center Avenue Pedestrian Bridge as soon as possible to clear that floodway impediment. During this time, we will work with the existing Army Corps of Engineer permits and the permits we already have in hand and our existing approvals to continue bridging. One aspect that I think we should consider as a no-brainer is the continued formation of a new work group that has been created to elevate homes in the flood zone. Dan and I met with a small group on Friday, are actively seeking applicants so that they can utilize grant money, brick, and state risk money and other resources. Our first meeting on Friday, we decided to include the C R C in our discussions because I learned that they have applied to be a five oh one agency to distribute state funds on the Office of Home Resiliency and Community. Another item that has us moving forward is the car's online request for the throughway authority and what is required to fix the issues of overflow flooding. That letter will be signed by the mayor, uh, once Dan finishes it up tomorrow. But really, it's a letter that that the Committee for the Environment has asked the mayor and, um, and us to to send over. We are hiring a consultant, S L R, to work directly with myself and Gino on the proof that the throughway needs to demonstrate that their flooding or their impervious surface impacts flooding in our community as well as to finally come up with a plan for the Maranick reservoir. Earlier today, in the Pentagon, Gino, I spoke with the state D E C dam safety bosses. Uh, we learned that in the past they have approved variances for dams. However, what I believe is a game changer is that this year and next year, dam safety has been included in a grant funding program by the state for fifty thousand dollars for studies and five million dollars per construction project. Uh, we will have a full report and memo on our meeting earlier today on November thirteenth, which will include the removal and rebuilding of the dam as an option now since we would qualify for the five million dollar funding. Funding will not be an impediment for improving the dam situation. Last, at the request of the mayor, I have registered to attend all county legislature legislator meetings as well as any budget meetings that are held. I do want to thank county planning and operations who both attended our Army Corps meeting on Friday and are ready to share funds that they have set aside to start the A C E project on a reimbursement basis. And I'll manage that process with Dan, Gino, um, and the typical excellent staff at the village. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, for the village manager, uh, invitation to address the board. Uh, limiting comments three minutes as usual. Anybody want to address the board? Old friend Glenn.
No, he doesn't start when I hit the phone.
It's good to see you back, Glenn.
Thank you. On Tippit, five oh six Hill Street, member of the legislative committee, but speaking here at Boardman's House, North Hill Street. A couple of things, a couple of things that Jerry went over. Understand, so many things that are going behind the scenes done by the town when, uh, sixty percent of village members are members of the Town of Maranick. And we can go to the Town of Maranick Board and express our displeasure at what they're doing to the village. They're basically, as the old saying used to be, they're they're treating us like the stepchild.
Redheaded stepchild.
The redheaded stepchild. And and it's not right because they charge us for the services. You see what your town taxes are. And as they're not afraid to 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 put that charge on the village of Maranick residents. So as we fill this room, occasionally you gotta fill the room over there or they just don't get it. Or they or they don't pay attention. Uh, during the work session, you did go over on a a very, uh, uh, let's let's say lofty plan for, uh, rec and parks and such. And it's all well and good, but understand something, okay? As 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 Rosie as Jeff and Jason and Jerry might say, revenues aren't going to come close to covering these costs. But you, if you really want the programs, just, you know, you're gonna have to fill the village. We we might be looking at a one or a one and a half percent increase in your property tax, but we feel these are programs you want. That that would be the honest answer. When you talk about two hundred, two and a half million dollars for a water park and it's a twenty, twenty years, probably a twenty-year bond, the bond and interest isn't even covered by every penny brought in by the beach currently. There there's just, there's just no way. You also are gonna have additional cost of what what is the, uh, additional cost of maintenance and what is the additional cost of personnel? Again, it's all fine and good, but just be honest with the taxpayers. We think these programs are essential for our community. We think they're essential for teens, we think they're essential for children, seniors. We think it's a great way to spend money. And we 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 may be raising taxes a little bit, but we are greatly enhancing services. And that's what I would consider, being honest with the village and getting the programs through that will enhance our village. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tippett.
Thank you.
Welcome home.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else?
You're important, you didn't go up to get a finger doll. No. We had to comment on the public hearing.
Yeah, well, when when we get to the public hearing part, yeah. That'll be, that'll be coming up soon.
Stuart Teager, um, I have a bunch of pretty much yes, no questions that I think should be of general interest to those residents. Um, I'm gonna go through them and if you choose to answer, then that's great. If you don't, I'm gonna say that that's a no. Do we currently have a floodplain manager as is required by law? In two thousand and twenty-one, the board approved fifteen thousand dollars to design and do cost estimate for a sidewalk along the Old Boss Post Road. Has that been done? Two, over two years ago, the village board approved, I believe, about eighty thousand dollars for municipality five to be implemented in the building department. Has that been implemented yet? The dredging contractor started working months, six weeks ago. Is he continuing to work? I've been around to the rivers, I haven't seen any activity. The Army Corps plan envisions the Army Corps needing eighty-five properties, a section of eighty-five properties, um, to do their work. Within the talks with the Army Corps, was there any discussion of whose responsibility it will be to bear the cost of gaining the easements they need? And the last one is, a lot of people have been talking about garbage on the street, on the L M C two. Is there a requirement in village code that the village pick up commercial garbage? I see there's one for residential garbage, but I couldn't find anything that requires the village to pick up commercial garbage. As I said, I think they're all reasonable questions that affect pretty much everybody in the village. I'm sorry, nobody can can like, um, publicly.
Do we, I mean, do we have answers to any of those questions?
Do you want to answer?
No, I'm saying, do we, I would like to know if the if the staff has answers to any of those questions. Those are.
Well, you 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 can answer them, Nora. If you'd like, you could answer them, uh, but you know, anything you say can and will be used in a court of law.
I just have a quick question, Sir Teager. Uh, what was the last state, last one you mentioned?
Commercial garbage.
Thank you.
Whether the village is required by code to pick up commercial garbage.
Thank you.
Believe it's a fairly, my understanding is that we pick it up seven days a week, which is a considerable expense.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm I'm I, I'm I'm interested to know what the answer to those questions are, is what the answers to those questions are to.
Why don't you ask Steph tomorrow and you can share it with, uh, Mr. Teager? Okay, anybody else? All right, let's go on to the public hearings. Public hearing on P L L W twenty twenty-three, stormwater management. Item two A on the agenda. First of all, I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, what this is doing, uh, you know, Mr. Cutler, we have you here. Why don't you, why don't you give us a presentation?
Good evening. Uh, Dan's gonna pull up a presentation. Uh, Greg Cutler, Director of Planning uh, for the Village of Maranick. I put this together to try and eat, uh, keep it short, don't keep rambling about nobody changes. Not have a like. Yeah, I sent you a PDF of the. Okay, so stormwater in front of resilience, the proposal lock. You can just go to the next page. So this is a four-part, uh, draw. The first is in that stormwater intervention within the stormwater code, um, increasing the storm design from a twenty-five year to a hundred year storm in all circumstances, uh, instead of just referencing to the New York State Stormwater Design Manual. Um, it also creates a retrofit requirement for substantial projects. Uh, there's also a stormwater zoning intervention, uh, so this is a zoning code change adding an impervious lot coverage requirement where one does not exist at all at the moment. Um, and then there's some resilient evoked zoning interventions. Uh, these are really meant to incentivize the elevating of homes and the construction of new construction that is resilient floods um, in accordance with FEMA standards, um, making sure that when you're elevating a building, that the lowest floor can be flooded, that the floodwater can be urteed, and that the building is okay. Uh, so it's measuring height from two feet above base blood elevation, exempting all area below, that's in the flood, in the flood zone, uh, exempting stories below and allowing for projections into the front yard for building access.
And actually, this is something that Mr. Tippett has been mentioning for years.
It's it's good practice, really. Um, and the last one is improving infill housing provisions. Um, it's is creating a point-based system for green infrastructure, uh, which will have additional benefits, but the the main focus of this was was really pushing for, uh, increased stormwater uh, retention or detention on on lots that are redeveloped for, uh, infill housing and commercial zone. And you go through, just go through each one of them and just kind of outline what we're meeting. Um, the twenty-five to a hundred year, this will apply to any any project involving two hundred or eight of disturbance. Um, the retrofit requirement, I I think is is really important because, um, looking at the when housing was built in the community, the majority of it was built, eighty-five percent of it was built before nineteen eighty and likely has no stormwater, uh, systems at all. Um, and most of the water, at least of the impervious surfaces, it's just keep flowing onto the village streets and going into village storm drains at high rate, which leads to, uh, contributions to the river. You know, the village is not the only, you know, contributor to the river. It's I mean, it's a, it's a very large watershed as we know, goes all the way up to White Plains Airport. Um, but we can do what we can here, Dan. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss any of the last one. Uh, yeah. Um, stormwater zoning interventions, uh, this is a maximum impervious lot coverage requirement, uh, it's fifteen percent for residential districts. I gave an example, uh, for a five thousand square foot lot in an R five zone, which is, uh, I think probably the most prominent thing the family building lot have. Um, and essentially, you, the current requirements for building coverage is thirty-five percent. Um, and then there would be fifteen percent on top of that for impervious coverage. Uh, so that's about seven hundred, no, it's not about, it's exactly seven hundred square feet, um, which is pretty much a twelve-by-twelve patio and sixty-by-ten driveway. Uh, it comes out to a little under seven hundred. Uh, comes out to a little under seven hundred square feet. Um, if somebody wanted to have a larger patio, they could, they could do something with impervious uh, material. As long as it's compliant with the definition, uh, and doesn't meet the definition of impervious. Um, and then a ten percent requirement in certain non-residential districts, which is which is stricter, and we would expect that in those circumstances, they would have to use more impervious surfaces if they um, are trying to uh, go over the allotment. The resiliency, uh, I I already explained these in the beginning. Go to the next slide and uh, this kind of just shows what that means, uh, bit of rudimentary image, but uh, it gets the point across. Um, if a house is currently at thirty-five feet, and open angle.
No, go ahead, no, go through.
Uh, then then it then uh, to elevate the house, it would require variances, and we do see these variances coming before the zoning board. Um, there's been at least two in the past few months. Um, and I'm sure there have been more uh, prior. Um, interesting to know uh, or concerned about, you know, having two tall buildings. Uh, there was a uh, analysis that I did in twenty sixteen, um, for which the data hasn't changed. That demonstrated that seventy-one percent of the sample properties, not I didn't check every property in the village, seventy-one percent of the properties would have see a height increase of under five feet.
So just to, so to simplify it, so if if I live in an area where the the uh flood is six feet, right, I can, and I'm allowed to have a thirty-five foot house.
Yeah.
I can then start counting the thirty-five at eight. So it it would actually be at the end of the day forty-three feet. Okay. Just so so people could get the math and the idea in their head.
Right. And if and if someone is in an area where they know that their flooding impacts have been higher than two feet above base blood elevation.
Right.
Um, this would still provide them with with more relief. Uh, because you you don't have to go to the height limit. Um, and it would get them, you know, would give them the ability to still have a little more space than if the current zoning in in place. So, you know, if you want to go four feet above base blood elevation, um, you'll still be allowed, and you'll still be able to have a little bit of relief.
Right.
Why don't we go on to the next one? Uh, this is too small for me to read from where I am, but I have memorized a good amount of it. Um, it's improving infill housing. Uh, this is a green infrastructure matrix, a point-based system for residence uses in commercial districts. Currently, there is a requirement that developments have green infrastructure and green building elements to the satisfaction of the planning board as part of their special product. Uh, this gives the planning board more authority, um, while also giving applicants the the op, the ability to kind of choose what fits the site. Um, although it's it's either you're choosing all of the ones on uh, underneath the first one to reach a hundred points. Um, where you're choosing the first one and a couple of the other ones, uh, the first one being a five hundred year storm design. Um, so that's right out in center. It's really designed to steer folks in that direction, but where it's not possible, you can do all of these other things, which include uh having uh permeable papers and porous porous concrete, uh, that's not counted towards your stormwater uh, clients. So that would be in excess of a hundred year storm, should this be adopted. Uh, it includes uh, solar panels with a minimum, bike parking with a minimum, exceeding uh, state energy code, uh, biofitted design elements, which I'll get to on the next slide. Hopefully, I remember everything. A hundred percent electrical systems for heating and uh, I think that's everything.
Blue roof.
Blue roofs. I think we included the biofitted design.
Yeah. Last one.
And then just to give a definition, because I know it sounds like bit of a jargony word. Uh, biofitted design elements are are elements that incorporate natural systems in building design and building systems. Um, but biofitted design elements include biomimicry, hightech creation, and the creation of natural natural landscapes. Examples include green walls, green roofs, and pollinate pollinators in square. And that's it.
Okay. Good job.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Uh, I I think that this is a a large step forward. And we can use this, if we pass this law, we can use this as an exemplar to the com- communities north of us who are contributing so much stormwater to us. But I think you you have to get your own house in order before you tell other people to get the house in order.
Yeah.
Anybody wish to comment?
Can we just make sure that that goes on the website? That's because that was really great.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Stuart Teager, um, I agree, we need to get our house in order. Um, I think anybody who knows me knows that one of my focuses for the last decade has been stormwater. And in my opinion, how poorly the village administers chapter two ninety-four. Um, but to be fair, I am totally in favor of the allowing folks to raise their homes. Um, I am concerned that the base blood elevation was, I think, blown out of the water during night. So that that may not get people's first floor above another item. So I'm not sure how you deal with that in a law, but you might want to consider that. The stormwater stuff, uh, just take a moment to say hi to Augie. It's nice to see him even on the screen. I believe the rest, the going to a hundred year rain event as the criteria is as the phrase goes, putting lipstick on a pig. Stormwater management is non-flood mitigation. Like dredging, while it may find incremental effects, it will never be meaningful. This law, if passed, will simply be certain signaling like our leaf blower law, idling law, and stormwater law that have never been meaning for enforced. The result of increasing requirements for a hundred year storms then will only mean that developers and engineers will have to misrepresent their plans even more to gain approval from the village consulting engineer and the planning board. Instead of this law, why not focus on getting our building department and consultants take stormwater management seriously and enforce our current law? Here is why I believe the administration of our current law is broken. Chapter two ninety-four says that the building department may have the following inspections of stormwater at the start of construction, at the installation of sediment and erosion control measures, at completion of site clearing, at completion of rough grading, at completion of final grading, close to the construction season, completion of final landscaping, and six, at the successful establishment of landscaping in public areas. The code also requires that all applicants must submit as-built plans for any stormwater management practice located on the site after final construction is completed. I know of no stormwater management plan in the village in the last ten years where this has ever been done. A few examples. All of those inspections I just read, project was recently approved at thirteen ten Flagler Drive. On the building permit, there's not one required inspection of stormwater practices. There's no requirement to submit the as-built plans. The eight hundred Rushmore site, which has been uh, let me just say, on thirteen ten Flagler, it was approved without a floodplain development permit and without the necessary components to make it floodplain compliant. Same happened with Rushmore Avenue, eight hundred. Um, the bill, the building department has not been able to produce a SWIP, which includes Stormwater Pollution Protection Plan, which is the basis of stormwater management. And they haven't been able to produce any review by the village consulting engineer in six months. I originally asked for them in February of this year. I don't believe they exist. I believe this project was approved again in the floodplain without any stormwater management. Two oh seven Grand Street, the longest-running land use disaster in the village, ten years now since it entered the weapons. Building inspector went out, filed a report, said the coltex were to plan. Seven months ago, I asked for the plan the coltex were installed to. I've yet to get an answer.
Mr. Teager, may may I ask that you just refer to your comments to the law in front of us? You're you're rehashing the history of your.
I I'd appreciate it.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm making a comment that's pertinent to what you're saying. Please let me finish. I'm just asking that you make comments to the law that we have, not recite the history of your foil life. Please just keep it to the law we have.
Mayor, my point is.
I I can't make you do it. I'm just asking.
I I would appreciate not being hectored.
You're not being hectored.
Yes.
It is a point of order, sir. It was a point of order. It was a point of order, but go ahead.
Okay, I I believe my point was, and maybe you didn't hear it, was that increasing it to a hundred year um, requirement for properties over with over two hundred feet of soil disturbance is onerous, and it will never be enforced, even now. None of, very little of chapter two ninety-four is enforced, so I'll go on. So on two oh seven grand, building inspector put it in inspection report, saying the coltex were to plan. When asked for the plan, they were submitted, they were installed to. The building department cannot produce them. Eight-eight-six Oriente, everyone's favorite scoff wall. The owners have been using their rule for two years. Despite under information belief, it's lacking a required safety components. And that's never completed better process of getting a certificate of compliance. There are, when the planning board approved this, they clearly had doubts about it. And they required eight things um, that had to be done before the board got, before the owners got compliance. Again, these were asked for six months ago. I was informed at that time that none of them had been completed. Again, these are requirements of the planning process for stormwater. If we have a system where the building department ignores the requirements of planning or review of stormwater, I'm not sure what the purpose of making our stormwater law even more restrictive. So I would suggest that instead of creating yet another environmental law that the village clearly won't enforce, because they're not enforcing it now, that you focus on and the village engineers here tonight. So I'm assuming he understands stormwater. And I hope he will speak with the building inspector and try and come up with a system that actually sees that stormwater management plans that are put into effect are instituted at the sites. Thank you.
Evening.
Evening.
You're McKee, Grant Harris. So what was in front of us was a stormwater management plan. That was the title of it. What I saw was one item discussing stormwater, fifteen others discussing solar panels, bike parking, and other miscellaneous side electrification, things that do not deal with stormwater. Additionally, this, but every single item onto the property owner, not a single item, was what the villagers were gonna do, or any other steps that they'll be taking to manage the storm water. Uh, if you want to pay attention or not.
I'm hearing, I'm writing down notes.
Um, additionally, on top of that, you're putting the on, on owners, every single project that is over two hundred square feet is literally any project that anybody will ever have to do on a property. Right? So now, they deserve two hundred square feet. They have to then retain five hundred, five hundred stormwater floodwater.
That's not correct.
Then.
That's not correct. What what you were looking at was the recommendations for I, with properties that need a special use permit. Special use permit is in, you know, you, special use permits in the C one and C two district for infill housing. That would not affect a person doing a house. It was only for infill housing.
So the examples were patios, driveways, a five
Yes.
dozen square foot lot, those are.
Could you, could you?
So this, so this is, this is not for residents. This is for special use permits. Is that right?
The the change from twenty-five to a hundred year would be for for every.
For everybody.
Everybody.
No, you were talking about, please, please let him finish.
Um, but you you currently have to do a stormwater system at two hundred square feet now. It's just the change from twenty-five to a hundred, which is not uh, quadrupling. It's actually, depending on the state circumstance, you might have to put an extra coltech, like another chamber on the ground. It's not like a.
Yeah.
Right. It's not.
So I am an engineer. I do understand that the five hundred year flood is, if not five times a hundred year flood, right? The elevation is sometimes as much as just like a foot more. That's that's my point. Point is that anybody that deserves two hundred square feet of their lot now has to put in huge retention tanks just because they want to put in a patio. But the village itself is not undertaking any steps to retain said water or to manage the water. You spent two point seven million dollars digging dirt out of the river. Right? Which other time?
No, I'm just, please go ahead.
So instead of discussing during the stormwater management plan, solar panels and electrification buildings of individual residents, we should be discussing how we are, well, hold on, excuse me, how we are managing the water and how it gets to the streams and out to natural sources of bodies of water. Right now, you just did Route BAV or Gertrude BAV. You have two large sixteen, what are thirty-six inch pipes going into a sixteen inch pipe. Doesn't take engineers to understand that just because you put in two large pipes is not gonna get the water through that one small pipe that's going down Marinerick Avenue. You need a plan that gets all of the stormwater from the dam all the way out to the sound. That is a stormwater management plan. Nothing more, nothing less.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Glenn keeps getting out.
All right, Florida FMAC speaking for myself. Um, it's a step in the right direction. Um, is it perfect? I don't think it's perfect. And I'd like to make it perfect. Um, we need roof, mandatory roof detention systems or blue roofs. Um, but put this at the bottom of the list with rainwater detention and reusable systems for. with rainwater detention and reusable systems or blue roofs, you know, the service to what the whole idea was about. Um. This, this idea came from the FMAC to not to hurt homeowners and not to hurt people that are, you know, want to improve their houses. This was a, this was an insurance policy for the people who live in the flood zone. So any commercial or any multifamily that was in the flood zone that just been put it at layman's terms, so everyone understands it because it gets confusion, confusing. Put it in layman's terms. We wanted to have five hundred year flood storm, five hundred storm flood management in the flood zone and mandatory roofs, detention roofs. Cause in the flood zone, we have an aquifer. And whatever goes in the, in the ground gets inundated, period. Floodwater comes up and then it's done. There's no more stormwater that works. And it was a hundred year for a multifamily or commercial that wasn't in the, in the flood zone. But maybe drained into the flood zone with mandatory roof detention systems, not anything. Because it's all about timing here. The water comes down hard, it goes into the rivers fast, and the rivers inundate and the water gets uh, backs up. Okay? Just imagine. Just imagine the Avalon, one thirty-one Sheldon Drake Place, Phillips Park, House of Honda. Grant Street Loss, Ameritic Self-Storage. The, the, the new proposed addition for the self-storage is four sixteen on Waverly, which they want proposed. Five seventy-two Van Rans, which is another, uh, multifamily. One thirty-three and one twenty-nine across the street prospect. Six thirty-seven Barry, the Mason. And maybe soon to be the Hunter Lot. If they all had mandatory roof detention systems, okay? How many thousands of thousands of gallons of water would not go in and rush into the storm drains and inundate the rivers? Because it's all about timing. The floods come up fast and they recently fenced. So it's a great step forward. It's a great step forward, but it needs to be tweaked. And that roof retention system has to be mandatory. It has to be in there. We have an aquifer, especially in the flood zone, for the flood zone. You're going to put five hundred, you're going to put all of these coltex in there, and it doesn't work. Because, because the aquifer depends, we, we have to, we have to, uh, hope that it doesn't, we have dry uh, a dry spell before the heavy rains. You know, I mean, and these storms are getting worse and worse. And this bar has to be, and this, these laws have to be good for fifty years from now. And I hear this a lot from all of the engineers who come here and they go to the planning boards, I go to the planning boards, the zoning boards, and, and they say, well, it's better than what's here now, because we don't have any stormwater in this building now, and we're going to put a few coltex in there. Okay? To me, that's not good enough. It's not good enough, it's, it's not, it's not a good enough insurance policy for the people who live in the flood zone. I want the best that we can have. Is it going to cure flooding? No, but thirty-five percent of the flooding comes from ourselves here. Am I correct, Dan?
Thirty-five percent of the watershed is below the Maranic Dam.
Yes, thirty-five percent of it comes from us. If we don't clean up our backyards, we can't go to Harrison or Scarsdale and, and, and complain about them if we don't, if, if we're just, you know. Excuse my French, but pissing on our legs. So it's a good step forward, but it has to be tweaked. This mandatory roof detention system has to be in there. It's the only way, it's the only way for the future of Amerenic, and it's not. It's not about what's better there, there now. I get that, there's nothing there now. But it's for the future, fifty years from now, sixty years from now. If they say, yeah, they did the right thing. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Bernard.
Glenn Pippit, yada, 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 and all the rest. Uh, first of all, Boggy, I just want to say hello. Always happy to see you and remember, when you talk about the friendly village, the F and friendly village stands for Fusco. I hope you're doing well, my friend. Um, I confer with, uh, a lot of what's been said, I'm very happy that, um, you give me, uh, a lot of credit for raising the houses, for doing your short tank redemption, when he got the money for the library, then he went for twice as much, so. With the water retention, I believe Wiggily Avenue and a lot of these projects with the, uh, planning department are having one hundred percent water retention. Uh, beyond that, um, anybody who's getting the water retention systems, especially if they need, uh, maintenance. We have to have a complete list, but we have to make sure that the maintenance is done. I know that's something that the engineer has told me that he's actively working on. Because it doesn't make any sense to have the water retention systems throughout the village if they, um, if, if, if they're, um, if they're not maintained and they start to fail. But I think it's very important to have that list developed. Um, also, I think that, um, we, we need to, uh, try to embrace our neighbors and try to see if we can actually, uh, come up with a uh, a water management district, which includes Portchester, County of Ry, City of Ry, New Rochelle, Town of Amerenic, uh, Village of Large Monarch. Um, Harrison, White Plains, and Scarsdale. Cause that's basically where, where our water comes, and each, the, each of these, uh, locations also had problems with local flooding. And if you have a group of three hundred thousand asking for grants and help from the government, it's, it's, it's a lot louder voiced than twenty thousand. So I think that, you know, reach out to each community, if you need people from our community, go to other meetings. Let us know that, you know, we're going to speak and see if we, as the village in Maranic, can give full support, we can start with like the town of Maranic and go from there and see if we can get everybody on board. We'd be standing together three hundred thousand strong about dealing with grants and dealing with the entire watershed from the top to the bottom. Uh, there's been a lot of good ideas. Um, uh, we are working on the dam, we have talked about having pumps. We are talking about, um, uh, uh, highway mitigating the floods. So understand, no one solution is going to solve our problem. But if you have twenty different solutions and each one is worth one percent, two percent, three percent, four percent. We can get eighty percent of what, what we're looking for and then come up with more solutions for the last twenty percent. But it's, 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 don't reject one plan because of another. Accept one plan and then add to it with, with more and more ideas. And don't be afraid, just keep coming up, keep banging your head, it took me three years, but they finally are raising the houses. And eventually they do listen. And, uh, we, we've come a long way with the, uh, with the flood and hopefully with the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, pumps, dealing with the dam, uh, river dredging and other ideas. We can slowly but surely get everybody out of, uh, the floodplain and make everybody safe at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have to tell? Okay, uh, so you know the comments, you know, I, I, I'm very much in favor of the law. I think that it is a, a real common sense, uh, solution, not a solution that could fix everything. But, you know, it, it's, it's a, a step forward, as Bernie said, it might be his idea of what's perfect, but I just want to point out that the, uh, the idea of the five hundred year flood, you, you, if, if you don't take the five hundred year flood on the C one and C two, if you don't take that option, you have to do everything else to get to a hun, because the, if you will look, if you, it, it was hard to see, but if you had to get to a score of a hundred. And five hundred year flood was seventy-five on the scoring, and everything else added up to a hundred and five. So it, it would behoove people, and the idea was to be, it would behoove people to go with the five hundred because it would just be a lot easier and quicker than to have to jump through all those hurdles.
Correct. And there's also two other items on that list that don't count towards your, well, one of them counts towards your stormwater compliance. The other forest pavement and permeable pavement does not count towards your stormwater compliance. And therefore you have to do the hundred year baseline. The other, you know, uh, aspects of this law are adopted, plus the permeable, uh, pavement stuff. So in either circumstance, you'd be exceeding the requirements.
And, and I just want to clarify one other thing, if I'm a, if I'm an individual homeowner, homeowner, say in the, uh, in the, in the R five district, right? And I want to put an addition on my house. This only kicks in if the cost of the addition is equal to twenty-five percent of the cost of the house, is that correct?
Correct.
So if I'm putting a patio outside, if I'm disturbing area, but it only, it only triggers by a, a numerical dollar amount.
For a major renovation.
Yes.
For a major renovation.
And, and just to clarify about the green infrastructure, that was something the planning board asked for, um, back in two thousand nineteen, when PLLC, uh, was adopted and it had a green infrastructure requirement without standard.
Right.
So I, I, I thought it was important to get at that at the same time as addressing additional, uh, stormwater requirement.
Okay, thank you, that's good to know the history of that.
And, and ex- explain for me, um, uh, bicycle parking, solar panels, that was mentioned, how that figures into this. Um, yeah, it's, it's a reasonable observation, I mean, I, I like it, but, but.
I think you just said it was a recommendation.
Oh, okay. Infrastructure, rebuilding allows for fine.
Although that's the green building.
And they were required, but it just sent to the satisfaction of the planning board, and the planning board thought uh, at the time, they requested that additional standards be, um, included in the law.
Okay, so there's, there's many, many, many cooks involved in this.
And, and I thought it was an appropriate place, but the five hundred year, uh, um, and one of the options to, to reach the hundred year.
But, but clearly, anybody, any reasonable person looking at this will, is going to say, uh, the five hundred year is the way to go.
I would hope so.
Yeah, yeah.
And it, what happens if, like, if we ended up putting a mandatory, um, uh, uh, roof detention? You think that would deter people from building, or what do you, what do you, what was the hesitation of not putting that in?
Um, so it's possible would deter people, um, it also would kind of cement one building design style, um, and, you know, from this, this is something that the trustees can obviously debate about if you want to.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, it would, um, create kind of a plan boxy kind of template for most buildings, if, if the whole roof was tensioned. Um, but otherwise, you know, I think blue roofs are a great option in the industrial and Washingtonville neighborhoods where there is a concern for dusty groundwater. Um, where they could fill up during, uh, when the water table goes up. Um, so, you know, I think it, it will depend on the site and that, you know.
With coltexes don't work.
The assets, I think it's probably better if an engineer is talking about this, uh, than me, but.
No, that's fine. Um, is there, is there any, at any way, any place for there to be wiggle room for somebody not to have any type of rainwater, uh, uh, them, uh, roof detention? Or any type of those systems? Is there a wiggle room?
Uh, not in the infiltered, and, uh, you'd have to have some type of stormwater system.
Thank you.
All right, um.
All right, do you have an additional comment?
I just had a question about the twenty-five percent, um, criteria. So if you have a two million dollar pound and you're doing four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work. That exempts you from what?
It's, it's based upon the cost of the house.
Right.
Not the property, not the prop, not the property.
You have a two million dollar house.
Okay.
You're going to do four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work.
Okay.
What does the, what are you exempted from?
From having to treat the entire lot as, from having to treat the entire lot as though it's undeveloped. So basically what it says, get over the twenty-five percent. Your existing roof, all the leaders on that roof, your driveway, they have to go into a storm system.
Okay, but not.
Plus the additions, you know, whatever addition you're doing.
Right, so you'll still have to do stormwater management for the entire house.
If it, if you're doing an addition, that costs more than twenty-five percent of the value of the home, then you have to direct all stormwater from the existing structure to a stormwater system. Currently, you only have to treat the addition itself. You don't have to have the roof leader in the driveway going to this storm system, those remain as is.
Right, that's if your improvements are more than twenty-five percent, right?
Yes.
So my question is, if they're less than twenty-five percent, say you're not doing anything to the house, but you're you know, putting in decks and patios and all that kind of stuff.
And you would only have to treat what possibly determines, you know, reached the point of, of justice.
Okay, so you wouldn't have to do, you wouldn't have to control the stormwater coming out the house.
The whole house though.
The whole house, right?
Yeah, only the portions that you're adding up to, which is what is the current requirement.
Okay.
Right, is the calculation based on the value of the house or the value of the house and land? We define that?
The value of improvement, so it's anything other than the land.
Okay, so, 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 okay.
At, at the time of the application, so existing, not.
Good, Bernard?
So just the, uh, comment on Greg's comment about the, the way places look, the square boxy look. Uh, the idea is just for a commercial or a multi-family, so all of the ten places that I mentioned. Alcoa, the grand street. Everyone except for the Avalon has a square box look to it. Everyone, if you drive around the village, I'm American Avenue, ninety percent of the ninety-five percent of the buildings are all square boxes. Industrial areas are all square boxes. Not asking to put a roof detention system on a residential house where unless it's more than, you know, if it's a four family house, then it's a, gotta be a box with a pool on the top. Think of it that way, they can go swimming during the summer.
Okay, uh, anybody else want to comment on the board?
Yeah, you know, I'm glad we're doing this, we've been talking about it for a long time, um, I think we have to make sure we have a new, you know, we have a new building inspector, we just got a compliment today for, for a project well done by an applicant, um, I think that we need to make sure that we are, it's, it's a stronger law. And, you know, Greg's, at those planning board meetings, we need to make sure that the law is followed, and I think that's, that's our, that's the next hurdle, we got the law passed and now, you know, it's, it's up to.
Well, we haven't got the law passed yet.
We're close to having a law passed, and I think it's, it's just now up to.
If you were a betting person or.
Anybody?
I, 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 I just want to make sure that, you know, we are able to stick to our guns and.
Thank you.
Keep it.
Yeah, it's, 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 of course, it's not enough by itself. But, uh, I always say, it's when it comes to flooding, we need to do everything yesterday. So we do this today.
Do you want another shot?
Go ahead, thank you. So instead of hearing that thirty-five percent of the watershed is below Amerenic lines, here's a map of it. And this tiny portion down here is. So thirty-five percent is more than a third. Not sure that's one-third of the entire map. Mind you that we've got roofs here, retention roofs and conditions to hold. Retaining this water, if I assess any other, talking about thousands of square feet compared to hundreds of square miles. Retaining this water, if I assess any other, talking about thousands of square feet compared to hundreds of square miles. Right? So I'm all for making the right moves and making smart decisions. But if you want to make an impactful adjustment to the problem, you have to start thinking a little bit bigger. Not, you know, retention systems for some of these houses, they want to put on an addition. They, they have, maybe they bought a, you know, an inexpensive house, probably, you know, a fixer upper. They want to put on a small addition and fix it. Now they have to put in retention system. The cost of having retention systems on roofs, I understand we want to do all the things that we can, but it will start becoming cost prohibitive for any developer. Their lives. People will just decide not to. Properties will become derelict and then you'll be dealing with a much bigger problem on your hands. You'll be dealing with divertment leaving. Instead of improving the site that they are on. So this, if you mandate this, this will become the larger problem than it is the solution. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on the board want to comment? Nobody else on the board was coming up? Okay. And then motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
All right.
I need a motion to, there's a resolution in front of us that has the, all the requisite I's and T's dotted and crossed. It has a consistency review. And it has, talks about that we received information from the planning board. So with that being said, do I need a motion to adopt the law?
Some move to adopt the P L L W 2023.
Can I have a second? Okay, call the roll, please.
Presti Rawlings?
Yes.
Presti Azar Reed?
Yes.
Presti Young?
Yes.
Presti Lucas? Mayor Murphy?
Aye, thank you all very much. All right, that's the first law. The next law on the agenda is the streamlined solar panel permit. What this law does is if you were putting solar panels on your house right now, you're putting solar panels on your house, you have to go before the Board of Architectural Review. Everyone who's putting up even one solar panel has to go to the Board of Architectural Review. What this will do is this will allow you to put up to 20 panels on your home and just get it passed in the building department. If you go over 20 panels, then you have to go to the B A R. Or is it usually one or two hearings? You go to the B A R meetings.
It depends. So it depends. Usually it's one or two hearings.
So with that preamble, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Greg, you want to talk about this law? Would Bob, whoever wants to?
I think you summarized it quite nicely. It's a, it's a law that if you're under 20 panels, you would not require B A R approval. It also indicates that the panels have to be oriented the same way, whether it's horizontal or up and down. That's based on commentary that we heard from the B A R. So we talked to, we had the B A R, you know, come up with some criteria for items that they felt could be handled by the building department that the criteria they set. That's what the board has to block.
And I, I have a question of which turns. Give him the mic.
If we were to decide, because I know there's going to be comment to this effect, to not require this to go under any level to the planning, to the B A R, would that be a substantive change?
Saying you remove 20 panel restriction?
No.
You say that, 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 that the B A R has no, no say about solar panels, period.
So you'd be effectively removing the.
Moving the B A R.
This law would not require you to go to the B A R, giving 20 panels or two.
I understand that, but I'm saying if I would.
You never have to go to the B A R. How many panels are sold?
Yeah.
That's my question.
That would be a substantive change.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody want to make comments on this law? Please.
What you're getting at, what, the 20 panels, can we, can, can we revisit why the 20 was chosen?
Whoever wants to answer, Mr. Cutler?
Greg looks like he's ready.
That was just the input from, from the B A R.
The B A R, okay.
So I brought the question to them because the community environment was interested in advancing unified solar permit. And they met and discussed it and they felt that based on their experience that, you know, under 20 panels, as long as they're oriented same direction on the roof line, seemed to be okay. And then I guess the review got more complicated and they got above that. I can't really speak for them, but that's the input that I heard from them.
I, I know that members of the, of the committee for the environment have thoughts about this.
So why don't we open us up to public comment?
He isn't there with the answers.
No.
Don't set me up. Hi, I'm David Freeman and I'm chair of the Village Environmental Environment. We talked about this in meetings. We are very much in favor of this law. It's, it's very important to encourage the solar panels in the houses. It's just state policy. Fashion, I think it's, it's the, the, if it's a plan, it just, or it's connected. And it's, it's definitely, and it also actually enacted a, you know, a solar panel law would give the village credit for the, the, uh, for the community, which actually puts money in the, on the, once we get certain, you know, what you get received. And part of this helps from the tasks of this law. Liam, you're going to talk about some specifics, including the, the 20 panels, which by the way, the community environment judge think this is, is necessary to have that prescription. But I do want to ask the question that is, is this law is really not a, it's really not a solar permit. It's, it's an exemption for permitting for certain particular projects for the B A R. But there is a unified solar permit that has been established by state. It's on the sort of that side and there's actually a resolution, a standing resolution that one can pass that actually in effect says the village of the town of Lang establishes this permit has a permit to use for solar and this permit attached to it. I'm wondering if that's part of this proposal or that would have to be a separate proposal.
I, I think this proposal and this law, the genesis of it was because all law now requires the B A R to hear. So I think that that was what we were trying to clear up here.
So I think in addition, the, the committee would strongly urge that would consider maybe not deny, but in short order, actually adopting the unified solar permit, which is a permit and it's a resolution that says we're adopting this, is the way we're going to do solar permits.
That, that might be something that could be done administratively. I don't know.
Well, if it can be, so, so much of that.
I think it's, this is an issue of, we have to crawl before we can walk. If we have to get to, in order to get to, you know, point A or point B, you have to.
This isn't good.
Yep.
I think it's the next step.
Yeah.
We can't do it administratively, we should do it, let's say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liam. Liam Robert, for the environment. To the point of the unified solar permit, there's 11 other municipalities in Westchester that adopted it. The point of it is to make getting solar panels on your house easier. So, you know, to utilize the whole process that every municipality is hopefully the same. And if you're a contractor, homeowner, it should reduce the costs of getting solar panels. It does allow for Board of Architectural Review and an exemption for historic buildings, which is something that you were, been around a lot. My concern with the 20 panel number is that that might cover an average house. I think it all depends on the panels of the, and the sun time hours and all sorts of things like that. So, you know, as my, summing up, my streak just put on, so although they're not in a large house and I counted, they have 48 panels.
Oh, really?
Nice. So I'm just wondering if this is slightly arbitrary, this number? And if, you know, we can come to some agreement with the Board of Architectural Review where they set some guidelines that can then be enforced by the building department. Okay? The, the object is to make this process not happen. So that would be, would be my request. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But do you think we should go ahead with this tonight? Because it's like, it's one step in making it easier or should we go back to the, or?
Well, I understood that this didn't incorporate the unified solar permit, which we've been asking for a while. Yeah, by all means, go ahead tonight and make this easier, but, you know, I don't want to be standing here in a year saying, what about the next step? So that would be mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the unified solar permit is a great idea. One thing I mentioned about the 20 panels is solar panels come in different sizes. There's some solar panels that are 17 square feet. So I'm not sure what would be 20, when that was come up with. I'm not sure what size panel they were envisioning, but you might want to consider just changing to a certain amount of square feet of solar panels. Thank you.
Yeah, other comments from the audience? You know, instead of passing this tonight and then amending it in a year, as Liam pointed out, it just shouldn't seem like a hard thing to redo and then pass it the end of November or something like that.
It's like any of our laws.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't think that it's.
Because I understand a point about 20 seeming arbitrary.
Yeah, that's, I don't understand myself. I don't.
Well, it was a rhetorical question to everybody but you.
It is the changes. Just move that one. Just, just say.
That this no longer has to go to the A R.
Yeah, a, a simple, and, and then and, and now to get solar panels, you use a unified form and we're done. Unless, unless the B A R wants to weigh in between now and then.
Nor, what do you think?
Well, I'm looking at the unified seller permit, which is about five pages and has a lot of information on it. And I think we really should check with the building inspector for.
Yeah.
To see whether, you know, see, I mean, I think we have to figure it, I, I think all the stakeholders need to understand what we're switching it to.
But my, the question really is, do, do we want to have a law just taking B A R out of the process at this point? Because what we're doing tonight was, you know, limiting V A R's input to 20 panels of the law. So, and, and I'm in favor of just taking B A R out of it and allowing the building inspector to set certain guidelines, as, as you pointed out, with maybe the advice of B A R. Does that sound good to everybody else?
Sounds good to me.
Just one thing on the permit, there's kind of a, a limited universe of contractors out there who do solar installations. So it's not like it would be something alien to them, just the same permit used in the Village of Ameritic as used in their municipalities.
But I'm just pointing out that the law that we're talking about right now is not about permitting. It's about exercising B A R. All right, does that sound like a good idea?
I, I think we should explore it. I think the building inspector needs to look at this permit.
No, but we're not talking about the permit.
Well, but what we're, but what we're adopting.
No, just, just back up one second. What, what this law is and only is, is about removing and limiting B A R's participation. That's what we're doing here tonight. There's nothing in the law that we're passing that has to do with a permit. So that, that's a separate issue. So the, the issue is, you know, not, not are we going to have, adopt the solar permit right now, but is whether or not B A R is part of the approval process, the solar panels.
Well, okay, but that whole conversation started because the committee for the environment wants us to adopt the New York State Unified Solar Permit. So we're just, just, please let me finish.
Okay.
Just eliminating the B A R doesn't do that. One of the criterion in, in this application is, and this is what Liam noted that I had brought up, the, the application is not subject to review by an architectural or historical review board. So, um, so yes, if we're going to take the B A R out of it, then we would also have to take landmarks out of it because land, anything that is a landmark has to go to the B A R. So like, that's, that's just our little specific code. But we're still not, but just removing the B A R from this doesn't get to what they've asked. And that's, I think that's.
I, I, I understand that, but I understand what you're saying, Nor, but the, the, the law isn't about, we're not, we don't have to pass a law possibly to adopt the unified solar permit. That could be done administratively. What we, but none of that can be done until we get B A R out of the process. Because even if we adopt that unified permit, it, it doesn't, it, it would then be in conflict with the law about the B A R.
Removing the possible conflict.
Yes. So I, I, I agree that we should adopt that, but it, it doesn't have to be done at the same time.
I, I also think based on Liam's email and looking at the unified solar permit, solar permit again, that this, that you can adopt the unified state seller permit, but exclude certain projects. So if it's number, for instance, if it's, you know, it's, it's 25 KW or less, it's, it's not subject to review by a, a B A R or, or an historic review board. Then you simply, you still have adopted this unified permit, you just exclude certain properties from it. So I, I think, I think we kind of went, we got asked to do something, we thought we were doing something and we didn't go about it the correct way.
Okay, just let, let me, let me get this one more time. Even if we adopted that permit, we would still have to change the law.
Yes, and we would have to decide what, but we would, we don't have to eliminate the B A R from it. We have to decide under what circumstances, if any, the B A R should be involved.
The question then now is, do we want to eliminate the B A R? And, and, and I think that there is a consensus to eliminate the B A R.
Oh, the, the. Sorry to throw, I don't know, but the landmark, there are 11 landmark property that are laid out in the work renovation part of the code. I don't know if you want to include this, the B A R does the certification of appropriateness.
So they would see anyone.
They would have to see that.
Card that out for the story.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, please put the mic.
So you can adopt the unified solar permit.
Yeah.
And the village can get credit for that.
Yeah.
With climate communities and clean energy communities, right? If a homeowner wants to install solar panels and one of the requirements is Board of Architectural Review oversight, that can still happen.
We understand.
Defeats the purpose of having a unified solar permit.
We understand.
It's not streamlining the process.
That, that's why I want to take B A R.
And the same with, I think the zoning, if, if something is zoned as an historic place, then that has its, that. Something is zoned as in historic place, then that has its, that designation supersedes the. The Unified Solar. But you can still have those things. It's just. Becomes less. You know, useful.
Agreed. All right. What does the boards want?
So we bring it back two weeks. Take the B A R out of the picture and, uh, and, and, and off the.
Better go into work session in two weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Three weeks.
Three, thirteen.
And then, and then make any carve outs. We want to eliminate the, the eleven historical buildings or exempt them or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, is everybody around with them?
Yeah.
All right, then I need a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. We flow law. William's little laws.
All right.
So what this would i- is ban gas blowed leaf, gas powered leaf blowers in the Village of Mamaroneck. Uh, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and you want to give a little?
We've adopted a law banning the use of gas powered leaf blowers after May fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Okay. So it would, it would, it would keep the time limit on leaf blowers still in place. Uh, only thing, just no more gas.
And, and, and the practical result is that, that only. Only electric blowers would be permitted.
Well, this is one of the technologies.
Uh, okay, Jerry, the, the, the village. Itself is moving toward electric powered leaf blowers, aren't you not?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to point that out. So we, we're moving in that direction.
So, yeah, so the village is not exempt from this law.
No, the village is exempt from this law, but we, we, we are, we are moving toward that.
Okay.
In practicality. We just don't want to buy it all new. Today. Uh, all right, I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Sure, please.
What about schools?
Same, same thing. Uh, the schools are not, first of all, we don't have jurisdiction over schools. Anything that happens on school property is not, uh. Is not controlled by Village of Mamaroneck zoning law or code. As strange as that's. Uh, it's, it's actually, I, I think, under New York state law, it's the Department of Education.
They're going to get a memo of some sort because I live right by the school, by Mamaroneck High School, and I can tell you that they start. These blowing like seven A M. And, uh, you know, I can call the cops and they say, oh, there's nothing we can do about it. And they don't. So. Knowing that that's going to happen, you know, they're going to be using either electric or battery, right? Futures. I want to, I want them to know from that, from that day, that date. They're not going to be able to, they're going to have to change their tune. So I want to know who's going to, who's going to get these memos or.
Well, we, we, we could strongly suggest it to them, but we can't force them.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
The Jerry. Sorry. Jerry Winchester, ten twenty five, full room. Uh, I use leaf blowers. I don't know if you've ever used an electric leaf blower, but you can't really blow leaves. Especially in winter or any kind of way. Um. First of all, they have to be charged. The average, uh. And how we lower, you probably get a half an hour if you're lucky, if you have an eighty volt battery. Otherwise, what you do is you wear a backpack, which is probably for them. Okay, and you'll probably get an hour and a half because they work in unison. Now. I understand we're trying to have emissions, lower emissions and all that kind of stuff, but you still have to charge these things. And we have to understand that. You have. You have gardeners around here. You have people who do driveways. You try to seal a driveway that's got dirt on it. I see some contractors actually have like the air tech and they're going around with the air tech and they're going on that. Now, before when we put this leaf blower in, in effect, we talked about. How we were putting out dust in the environment, pollen in the environment, uh.
Particulate matter.
But the electric blower does the same.
Yeah, that's, you're right.
And, and so like, I remember we adopted a plastic bag law. We talked about how Mamaroneck did it. Right. Now we did the leaf blower law. We talked about Mamaroneck did it, I did it. We don't always have to do what everybody else does. I mean, it makes very little sense for a contractor who had so much more time to work gardeners. You know, how does he do his job? I'm trying to say, I'm a gardener. Going and fetching inside, but. Don't just pass laws because everybody else does. And if a leaf blower. It blows. It doesn't matter how it blows. You understand what I'm saying? If we hooked it up to a water gen, a generator, it's still going to blow. And put particulates out in the air. So at some point, we can't put a bubble around Mamaroneck. Can't put a bubble around people. It's just something we're going to have to deal with. And I mean, that's just my take on it because I do it for a living. And I know that. Can't do it. Mamaroneck will be a little bit earlier, but the village does this. It exempts itself from the staying laws that it puts on the people. They can't do that.
We're, we're pushing to, to go all electric as well.
And you're going to find out that that doesn't work. That's what I'm saying. And then you'll come back, hopefully you'll come back and retrofit the law. But again. You shouldn't exempt the village from that you're asking us about.
Thank you.
But yeah. Many strong sports to slow down. And we actually did a deep dive. We didn't just ask it because it's good. But for the environment, we actually took, uh, some test from the people that had, had experience, including scientists. And the interesting thing is. At least I was coming to leaf blower law initially because of the noise issue, but it's actually, the noise is the least. Least important for the environment at the standpoint of the impacts of leaf blowers. They store particulates, which we, and, and for, for hours after, using a leaf blower, you know, particularly in the air, it's. Bad for people with asthma, it's bad for kids, it's bad for animals, it's bad, it's actually worse than people that actually use the leaf blowers. It's a, it's a health issue, it's an environmental health issue. It destroys the water ecosystem. You get lawn, it's grass, but it's also microbes and, and pollen and worms and insects. You have an entire ecosystem. If you take a leaf blower, you actually nuke the ecosystem and make. It unlivable for anything but the grass. And it's not very good for the environment when you actually sustain it. And finally, it increases the carbon footprint. And. And as I said, the, the big impact is actually on workers that are being able to start that way on, on a day to day basis. So, but we would go further. A couple of comments resonated with us. We're going to go on it. We don't think that the village needs everything. I think the village should lead by example. And I think it's, and this is just something that, that. If you, you follow, I'm sure the. Our sponsors between Mr. Barrario and, and Judge Derago, and she was talking about the. The difficulty of asking people to abide by a law that you yourself are not abiding by. I think we as a village should lead by example. You should not have to use. Leaf blowers. I don't want to put words in Mr. Barrario's mouth, but I understand. Uh, as, as Tom, as Mr. Murphy, she young said, we're moving toward not using, uh. We're not using. Gas at all, but we're moving toward not using leaf blowers because there are technologies now that allow people to mulch the leaves. Any major piece of leaf blow equipment, you can, you can actually put a mulcher. In back of it and mulch the leaves into the, more of a base fertilizer. Uh, you can put the leaves around the bulk of the bushes, which protect them in the winter. So that's the newest technology and we think we should. Long term, we think we can probably do without leaf blowers. In the meantime, this is a very good first step. The need one other thing that we would recommend. Is trying to make it consistent with the ability of Larchmont. One of the problems in enforcement and equity is that each municipality has a slightly different law. And with a little tweak, we can make, actually two increase, we can make it that this law is consistent with the Village of Larchmont. Which is category successful. Here is actually working people that have been coming that weren't able to make it because of out of town. But they've had a very successful experience. And the two things that we would do, we recommend that. What consider is number one, uh, making the timeframes consistent. So the village of, of. Larchmont, uh, prohibits leaf blowers in the winter. They have. Period in spring you use it, period in fall, there's really not that much need for. They have to have leaf blowers created in the winter. The village doesn't permit it. I don't think we should either. And there's a little tweak in the schedule that if you change the dates from October first. Uh, from May fourteen, if you made the permitted period from. Uh, March fifteenth to April thirtieth rather than May fourteenth. Uh, and. October fifteenth, September fifteenth, you actually have a completely consistent ability to make it. I would recommend that. Uh, two other really tiny suggestions. One is. Um, in, 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 in R one or two, uh, where we say the operation of leaf blowers is permitted. I would, we would recommend entering the operation of non-gas powered blowers, just to make it very clear what we're committing. And then there's a word missing somewhere, maybe the power that anybody. Miss, missed by this week one day is I can, I can give it to you.
Jerry, what would it, what would be the, uh, the difficulty in not exempting ourselves from this rule law? That doesn't feel right.
It is possible.
What?
This is a policy. Whatever policy was adopted, we will abide by. Do you get the mic? I need the mic.
All right, I'm, I'm from an operational standpoint, why would it be difficult if, if we, i- i- if we?
We, we have very, very large parking lots and very large areas, clearly. But like I said, if the board is interested in. Not, or, or, you know, not exempting the village, so be it.
Did we, did we get a, a cost of what it would cost to buy all new leaf blowers? Before we make that decision?
We can't know.
What?
Five hundred dollars each. We have six of them. Backpack laws? Yep. Why someone will pay. That was me.
But.
So. Really up to you guys. Operationally, if the village forces. Are, uh, not exempted.
Yeah.
We'll deal with it.
And we have until May anyway, right?
We'll deal with it.
Yeah. Because the law wasn't.
For the school, they're in their own world.
Yeah.
Figured.
I actually appreciate how useful leaf blowers can be for certain things, but I believe they're incredibly overused. Or like to walk around with them and just love stuff. Think it'd be great if you just had a spring cleanup. And that go on the rest of the time. But my concern as I brought up with the Stormwater Management Law is historically, this has been a law that hasn't been enforced. And as I've, I've always argued, what easier law is there to enforce? You can hear these things four of a mile away. Um, and I truly believe that if the village adopt the policy that, um, whatever the date is. In the, um, spring. And just hold on to search for the first week, just go out and stop everybody and say, listen, I'm starting next week. But the way, and I would also agree with Mr. Freeman that the Larchmont law should be looked at. I mean, one of the problems with this law is, I read it. Come next summer. I'm a lawn guy. I send my guys out with a, um. Gas powered leaf blowers. The officer gives them a ticket, they go to court and they say, I was told to do this. I mean, this law says. It is an affirmative defense to liability under the subsection that the person operating the leaf blower was doing so in the direction of another person. I mean, this seems harder to enforce than our old law anyway. Um, so I would look to Larchmont, which has a section that lists responsible parties. And it lists everybody, property owner, business owner, the operator. Otherwise, this is just going to be, um. The way it is now. I mean, we're all going to hear the leaf blowers. All summer long. I mean, I hear them in our neighborhood and our neighborhood's gotten pretty good over the years. So. But honestly, the enforcement part, I just don't get how. You know, if a guy gets a ticket, he goes to the party, he goes, my boss told me to do this. And he walks. But. Thank you.
Jerry, can, can you, uh, share with the, everybody, the, your, your enforcement experience?
Uh, so we took a week this summer. To do targeted enforcement and try to. Educate, educate the property owner. And we wrote up thirty one tickets throughout the week. We had several people doing, and working on blitz, doing enforcement. And then. As David alluded to, um. They all went to court and a two hundred and fifty dollar fine was fifty dollars wholesale across the board. So there's an issue with the courts and how they look at this law as well. But typically write about a hundred tickets a year. And in that week, we did a third of what we normally do. Just to try to demonstrate that if we get out there more often during a blitz period, that we would, um. We would hopefully. Get the landscapers to stop using blowers. They're in a prohibited period, but for a fifty dollar, for a fifty dollar fee, I think they just can use it as.
Thank you. This minute.
Hi, I'm Catherine Canel. I'm in the Village of Larchmont, I'm the Larchmont環球委員 committee. And David asked me to just come by and tell you that we are very happy with how we blow our fan. We have very quiet winters and summers. I work from home, I'm a software engineer. My husband works from home, he's accountant. We had five properties, four who would blow all around us and. The sanity of having that level of leaf blowing activity come down has been great. Um, enforcement has been key in the Village of Larchmont. We have a really responsive twenty's, uh, force. We got to go and check on things when they get calls. I think they've been educated very well to realize that it's a quality of life issue. Just as teenagers are having a party next to you, they would respond to that as well. And they, they've always, um, they come when we call and. And try to at least talk to the people. They'll always give a, a ticket, but they at least talk to the people. And it is a repeat, it can seem several times that they didn't. I don't know exactly how they enforce it. But if you have questions, we would love to share what we know. Um. We have several experts within our group who really have thought about this and have gone through different iterations. Having the municipality follow the same rule as everybody else. I think would alleviate certain very angry landscapers, which is, we have some problems that we, some of our properties were still being blown with gas powered leaf blowers, even though it was illegal. And the landscapers, I mean, I heard it from them directly. They were so furious and it wasn't, it wasn't fair, right? So if everyone's going to bear the burden, I think it's, it's more easily. So if everyone's gonna bear the burden, I think it's it's more easily tolerated.
Does the town of America have a?
I'm I'm village.
No, I know that, I'm just asking, do you know if the town of America has a?
Town of America, we have uh, the environmental committee over here, they do not have, they have a leaf blower ban only during the summer months. And but the rest of the time, you can do whatever you want.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just heard Mr. Barber, you say, they give about, they give about a hundred tickets every year? Leaf blowers. I'm sorry, leaf blowing tickets. Okay. Hey, I've been following this for ten years, I don't think we've given a hundred tickets in ten years. It just, it's stunning to me. How Mr. Barber resembles to this board in the public.
You know, the, I'm sorry. You you you're done.
No, probably here.
No, that was, that was, that was, that was an ad hominem attack on an employee that was not necessary. And you do this all the time and be, no, and before you actually insulted a homeowner. Uh, at eight eighty six Orient Avenue. And you know, you do this constantly and it's not fair to people who work in this village, it's not fair to people who reside in this village. To constantly be the 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 onus of your anger. That's all I'm gonna say.
And and those, those tickets were adjudicated in this room. Those, the tickets were adjudicated in this room, the records are foilable, you like to foil?
I I've foiled them for the last ten years and that's why I made the statement I made. Yeah, well, okay.
Yeah.
I believe it's a disservice to residents to have a village manager.
You're done, you're done.
No.
No, you made an ad hominem attack and you were done, sir.
You're lying.
And you're done, sir, please.
You're lying.
And you, and you've been up and you've said your piece about the law, now you're making comments about the village and manager. Sir, you are done, please leave the podium.
Mayor.
Please leave the podium.
I'm not leaving the podium, if you want the officer to remove me?
No, I don't.
Nora will tell you about that. Okay?
That's another one of your lawsuits, but go ahead.
Okay. All I'm saying is that it's an incredible disservice to residents of this village. When the village manager feels so comfortable dissembling at public meetings.
Let him go, please. Go, thank you. Hi.
Glenn Kipit.
Hi Glenn.
I'm hearing two different arguments here. One argument I hear from the environmental committee is that leaf blower. Uh, cause dust, they cause, you know, an impact to the environment. Um, did not save for the users. But then this law is about electric leaf blowers and gas leaf blowers. So if you use an electric leaf blower and generally they don't have the power of the other leaf blowers, they're not as efficient. You would be using the leaf blower twice as long to do the same amount of work if it's an electric one. And you're not really saving anything in gas because you have to use X amount of electricity. And how do we create electricity? For natural gas. We closed any appointment, we don't have any nuclear power. Most, most of, most of our uh, most of our electricity now is produced through natural gas or whatever. Comes from New York state from the uh, from the.
Hydraulic.
But I understand about time periods, I have no problem with that. I I understand, you know, limiting the time of day, limiting the day of the week, I understand that. But what I don't understand is what is the difference between a gas leaf blower and an electric leaf blower? If, you know, your your greatest um, your 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 greatest problems with the leaf blower is what it does environmentally. If somebody wants to use a gas leaf blower because it's more efficient. And the question I had for the village was not how much the electric leaf blowers would cost. How many more hours would we have to pay our employees? To use the less efficient leaf blowers in order to do the same amount of work? Because if we gotta spend twice as much money in overtime in order to use electric leaf blowers as opposed to gas leaf blowers. How is that a benefit to the taxpayers? You know, I understand, I understand restricted, but I think we've had restricted that if you wanna make it more restrictive of when we use the leaf blowers, that's fine. But I don't, I just don't see, and I think uh, Jared is absolutely right on this point. I don't see environmentally what the difference between using an electric leaf blower and a gas leaf blower is. Only that it makes you, it makes you feel better for whatever reason, thank you.
I'd be happy to address some of the things that the parts about refer to not have a branch.
Oh, just play that, start.
So the difference between gas powered leaf blowers and electric leaf blowers, one, the gas powered put out incredible emissions, the equivalent of a truck, I think going three thousand miles. It's 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 something incredible because there's no catalytic converter, it's two stroke engine, it's very inefficient. Power wise, the electric um, leaf blowers have greatly improved. I do not think that you will see the manpower access need that you you seem to think that you that you will. I know that for me, I've seen a guy with a gas powered leaf blower blow one leaf. Um, you know, just, and there's just been a lot of waste with their fall. So it was just whether whether they're efficient enough.
Yeah, if they have enough power, efficient enough, or are you gonna take twice as many times into the leaf blower as a gas leaf blower?
I agree, they are not as powerful, they are getting better, but they are nearly, and they they do have a lot of power in them. Restricting how much access people have with the leaf blowers is is really key. I mean, people do wanna clean up their properties, but the debris, right, is still the same between the two of them. It's just that all the noise and pollution is greatly reduced and those are, those are two really big environmental issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys. For honor, three fourteen, so I was in the industry probably for about thirty five years, a little knowledge about it. Technology has improved drastically. Yes, one and two, it depends on the time of the year that you should be using. You have a battery or electric or gas, because during the the fall when we start tumbling and there's basically wet. Electrical one, battery one is not gonna do the same job as a gas. Maybe in ten years, twenty years, in technology, that's possible. Blower's a blower, caused environmental issues, asthma, blah, blah, blah. It's all gonna kick it up, still a blower. Where I get really frustrated angry is that schools aren't exempt. Someone said here, watching the whole seven o'clock, you know, these are coming to school, picked up. Country clubs, village employees as well. Not a homeowner, but I'm sensible, I've done it. Got a little handheld one, basically for summer to do my driveway, to do my walkway, and other areas to be addressed. All the gas, I'm not as sensible, gonna strap that uh, back, uh, gas power law. Put it on full force, causes issues. I think it's more of a noise ordinance that people are working at homework than the environmental side. Following the uh, like this. This might be wrong. So in an enforcement, we have all these laws on books, you know, pretty near the committee of times enforcement, it's tough, it's really tough. Believe you that.
Thank you.
Well.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to. Back up with the um, our friend from Larchmont said. The. Gas pa- I mean, yes, both. Blowing leaves creates dust, right? The gas powered creates a lot more particular matter. So um, you know, and I think there is a, an element of. The greatest health impacts on people using it. But also, I think what we're working with with the committee on environment is actually trying to get. People using leaf, blowing leaves less, right?
Leaving the leaves.
Leaving the leaves on on flower beds. I mulch all my leaves, I'm the only person on my street that doesn't have a little pile of leaves building up right now. Um, so there are other ways to do it and I think, you know, that's a longer term educational project.
Thank you.
Okay, so picture a place like Palmer Terrace.
Okay.
Okay, cuz that's a dense area with a lot of trees. I watched a crew go there, they have a pretty big crew. And they spend all day at that spot. And big places like that, if you're a landscaper, you charge, you're gonna, you're gonna put that work in. Okay, you cannot. Do it a place like that with electric blowers. Anybody in the industry will tell you you can't. And you can't do it after a rain. You can't do a place like Ridge Bell with all those leaves, with an electric blower, the technology is not there. So you're making a law that's going to affect places like this. Now, you wanna uh, pick a size, the Harbor Island can't blow. The Harbor Island uses tractor blowers to blow their leaves too, and blow their grass cookies. You cannot, if you put that burden on a big piece of property like that or or. Our terrace. You will never get it done. Who? Carl, you said you've been in the industry proud, can you do that with electric blowers?
It's impossible.
It's impossible, I mean, you're gonna come back, you're gonna come back, and you, which earlier you said, well, you know, people will just pay the fine out. You know, UPS, they deliver in the city all day, they double park. They add that ticket into the fee. So what we're doing is saying we know people can't do the job, they will violate the law, but they'll do it and we'll get paid for it. That's what you're doing. I mean, just take an extra two weeks, think about it, how can a place like that really, really do its job? How could you do Harbor Island if you did not exempt Harbor Island? You couldn't have guys go buy with backpack blowers. You need that tractor with that blower on that front to push leaves, it's just the way this industry does. I understand, I like the environmental aspect, I mulch ninety percent of the leaves on the properties that I do. That's what we do. But you can't do it when it's a massive place, you can't mulch on concrete. You're not gonna mulch inside people's driveways, you have to mulch on grass. Keep that in mind, I mean, it's the way it works.
Thank you, Jared. You know, this isn't a debate.
No, 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 I'm just gonna. Good, I do actually have a gas powered leaf blower, which I use to blow leaves off my driveway, onto the grass I can mulch. That's what I have to be honest about there.
Shout you say.
Full disclosure.
Be driving by tomorrow.
Okay, uh. Does anybody in the board have any comments or concerns or questions? I mean, uh, having sat, having accompanied Dave and company uh, on the, on the deep dive on this subject. The, the real point is that a lot of this debate deals with with. Uh, similar to a lot of problems that we approach in where we, we treat old uh, old uh, constants. Like they're still constants when they're really variables. And uh, and the uh, the idea that um, all the leaves have to be blown away or that off the lawn. Is 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 a constant that we're, we're presuming, when in fact, we know now it's better to mulch them in place where they are. So uh, and the big piles of leaves that get carted off, that's sort of a a uh, a a. A practice that is not uh, is not a best practice. This is a a step. To what I understand, to be a step in the right direction for what the the uh, the environmental committee were and 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 like minded people like. Truth is, I don't have a, I don't have a serious problem with leafs, but I'm listening to people who do. And I think I see where this is going, I see what the future looks like, and I think we should begin. Moving down this path because that's where it's headed, we can, we can um, resist the change and and and. And get passed by or we can uh, we can go with it and and direct it. So that's, I think it's a, it's a good first step. Anybody else?
Okay, I need a motion to close the public here.
So moved.
Second, you wanna sit?
Yeah, I'm just like, I I do think the idea of of of. Hopping um, Larchmont's timeframe is a good one. Um, and not having it allowed in the summer while, while we're changing it, because this law isn't gonna take effect for a very long time. I also think just the way we do things in general, we've had two laws that we've discussed that we might have. Really made changes to at the public hearing, and I think that it might be beneficial. To get this kind of input earlier than than our, the public hearing about the law, but when we're actually discussing in the work session, that's all. That's just because I think it, we, we would have benefited from having more public discussion about the um, seller permits. If we'd had more public input about it, I know that the committee for the environment came to the work sessions a couple of times, but. I think that um, we might be, it it may be more beneficial to do it before we're actually having done a notice and scheduled a public hearing.
But you know, an extra, extra two weeks is.
It's more than two weeks because we have to renotice it and rewrite it, I'm just, I just think that the more, the more input we get in the beginning, the better we. The better the laws might be.
You saying that with every book, public hearing?
No, with every public hearing, but I mean, this, we have two instances tonight where we learned a lot during the public hearing. And maybe we should figure out how to incorporate public comment into the laws before we schedule a proper.
That's the purpose of a public here.
Well, we can also draft better laws, so.
Okay, uh. Does anybody wanna close the public hearing?
So moved, second.
All in favor of closing the book here?
Aye.
Anybody wanna make a motion to adopt the law?
So moved. Second.
Augustino, call the roll.
Proceed, rolling.
Yes.
Presty, as you read. Presty Young.
Oh wait, I didn't even say anything, I'm sorry, I didn't even say anything, I'm so sorry, um. I've seen, yeah, I've seen.
Presty Young.
Yes.
Presty Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
No. Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But it passes. I think, I think we should look to revise it in the future.
Right. That's, I I I agree, and I think we should maybe put it on, I mean, I do think we should revise it, and I think that that's the point I was trying to make. That we got a lot of public comment, and I think we should change, we should not allow this to, I think.
Shouldn't vote for it. We got, we got, we got a template to work with.
Well, we need to discuss it.
Okay. Thank you all for your patience, your endurance, uh, the next up is the order to bills. Abstract of ordered vouchers, tonight's uh, grand prize is nine hundred and fifty three thousand five hundred and sixty seven dollars and twelve cents.
I just had a question and I'm just trying to find it, um, there was uh, the block part, it's under um, block parties and other events. And this was for the uh, refunds for the scarecrow building, well, the scarecrow, I guess, the scarecrow stuff. There's, there's about one, two, three, four, five payments, um, and one was ten dollars above, I don't know if that was a mistake. There were four payments for forty five and one for fifty five, and I'm trying to figure out why that one.
For each?
Oh, oh man.
She's doing it off the uh, oh yeah.
It says, oh mine, it says six out of uh, not six out of forty five. Sorry.
Wanna see it too?
I see page six, uh, payment.
Yeah.
Guys, can we keep, can we keep talking or instance, how do you, okay, thank you.
Uh, microphone.
I don't know those are actually entered by recreation, so I'd have to, I'd have to look it up.
Maybe a script is there.
Yeah, it's not, it's just, I thought, I was like, why is that one person get, you know, what did they pay ten dollars more for than the other ones? Because they seemed like that was the fee.
I mean, I can definitely look.
No, we, we.
Probably a typo.
Okay. Please verify. Thank you.
Any questions, concerns?
I have the general concern that I think we should be looking at the bills, and I want to after the nine pound training that I took, the controller, I think that we really are not doing our due diligence with the specific bills, and that we need to develop a different system for doing that, or designate someone else to be the auditor.
Have you looked at the best of the bills? Have you asked over the bills?
I have asked to look at the bills, but I need, we're supposed to look at every bill, so I, I look at specific bills, but that's the idea of looking at every bill between a Friday night and a Monday afternoon, when we don't have access to them except coming in and bothering a staff person to get to them isn't feasible, and I think we need to develop a system to be more compliant with what I understand to be the training is.
Jerry, uh, not Jerry, Jerry's not here. Bob, can I ask you? Under village manager form of government, i- is that a correct, uh, thesis that we have to look at every bill, like, uh, under strong mayor formal government?
Then we shouldn't even be approving the audit. I mean, if that's the case, then we haven't delegated it all to him, because we approved the audit. Yeah.
Then maybe that's, that, that would be a cleaner break. I know in the town, we didn't approve the bills. Okay, Mr. Teeger.
Yeah, um. I believe that the controller's office would say that this board is supposed to use the bills and know what you're paying for. If the board wants, it can inform and audit him that he's part of the law um, to do the audit bills and look at the bills. Um, but my specific questions are on page seven. There's Dana Pest Control. Where North Rook's Bay Plaza and Waverly. As soon as it's for the rats. Um, on page nine. There's Dana Pest Control for Ram Street, Center Street. Total living combined is ninety-seven hundred and fifty dollars. For monthly maintenance. That's nearly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Does this board know what the monthly maintenance is? Is it a matter of putting poison in the coverage?
It, which is the page? Yeah, sorry, which page?
Number seven. So I'm guessing is that what?
Just number nine. What's, what's?
It says three months of base.
Yeah, let me say this, yeah, is this the Dana Pest Control?
Yeah.
I, I mean, what we have here says it's for three months.
I'm sorry, my copy says V O M, monthly maintenance, Dana Pest Control. On both sheets, oh, I'm sorry, on the second sheet, you're right, on page nine, it says it's for three months. Yep, so is that the past three months, or is that, and is that for both? I mean, this is why the board should be looking at bills when you spend residents' money. You should know, you're supposed to know what you're paying for. Is anybody on the board? No, Andy, you know? What they do for the monthly maintenance? It's a lot of money, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars here. I mean, so I know, I know it takes some skills.
You just learned that one of those bills is for three months, and you're not, you, you just learned that one of those bills is for three months.
Please finish your comments.
Okay, the only thing I would say is one, one line says monthly, one line says three months. I don't know which one's right. If you had the bills, you would know. Page thirty-three. The amount should not, my question, this was charged to the line for shade tree. You got any reason it's not of the mother?
Which one?
I'm sorry, thirty-three, it's the second line.
Second line. What is it?
Future fence, twelve hundred dollars for a fence repair. My question is, why was it charged to shade trees?
That I have to check the invoice. Yeah, I mean, if, if, if it was.
It's, it's okay, just a little push.
Well, it's also okay.
No, it just stops doing it.
So the next line is Live View Technologies. I believe these are river cameras. Another twenty-one thousand dollars. Is that a monthly? It doesn't say anything about what that's for. Does anybody know what that's for? Again, you're sending our money.
Go ahead, Mr. Teeger.
No, I was letting them finish their conversation.
Go ahead. I know you, you're a three minute.
Anybody know what would take twenty-one thousand dollars to Live View Technologies for? Simple question, twenty thousand dollars.
It simply says it's for the Village of Merman, a cameras flooding, the flood, the cameras.
So, so, so let me get this straight. You expect the people on this board to know every single item on that, even though we have a village manager here? And you wanna come in here and play twenty questions with us?
Law required.
Yeah, okay.
The village attorney doesn't.
Yeah, and, and the village manager left because you lied about him at that. And, and he walked out insulted. I think we're done with you, Mr. Teeger.
Yeah, your, your three minutes are up. Please.
Did Mr. Barbario say a hundred tickets a year?
Your three minutes are up.
I will copy the board.
Your three minutes are up.
For the tickets for the last.
How many foil requests does Mr. Teeger have right now? Is it eighty-three, eighty-five, eighty-seven? What is it?
All right, it's a, please, please relinquish the mic, your time is up.
Okay, so maybe the board wants to put aside the ones you don't know what you're paying for?
Relinquish the board. And a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. You know?
No.
You know?
I'm no.
Well, let me ask, why are you no?
I'm no, because I'm gonna follow up with Bob. I've talked to the controller's office. I have some information. I think that either we are supposed to be looking at the bills and auditing them carefully, or we are supposed to delegate, designate someone else to be the auditor, but the way we're doing it isn't the proper way. This is not a criticism of staff, and it's an unwieldy process. I know that the staff makes sure that every bill has an invoice. It probably has the contract that that is associated with it. If it's a contract, I know it's a lot of work, and I know that it's a stack of papers probably like this for each product. But I think there's something wrong with our process, and either we need to be scrutinizing more or not doing this. So that's why I'm voting no.
So you don't wanna pay our bills tonight?
You know what, Tom?
No, that, that's exactly what's going on, Nora. You don't wanna pay our bills tonight.
Tom, you're putting words in my mouth. You're, Tom, uh, you're, Tom, you're putting words in my mouth. I wanna be sure.
Please don't shout out the new audience.
You're, you're putting words in my mouth.
No, you, you just voted not to pay the bills.
You just put, I, I voted not to pay the bills because I don't think that the process is right, and I'm not gonna be, I'm, I, I am gonna, I'm.
I'm glad you don't think the process is right that you've done a hundred times.
You know, sometimes people learn things. I spent a lot of time this fall at dealing with New York State Controller Training, specifically with this issue, and I wanna make sure that I'm doing it right. If you don't.
So the rest of us will do, will pay the bills.
You know, Tom.
I vote aye.
We're gonna, we're gonna get some clarity to this in the next three weeks. I believe that Bob and I will figure out the correct process. Thanks.
Uh, the next up is the order of manual, now, manual vouchers. Uh, most of this is, uh, utility bills. To New York State Power Department. The commuters?
Is this the, uh, the budget?
No, this is, this, stay up there, stay up there, cuz it's up next. Uh, okay. Anybody have any questions or concerns about the, the manual vouchers?
No.
I have the same ones.
In motion.
So moved. Second.
Hold the roll, please.
Presti is rolling.
Yes.
Yeah, as you read.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Lucas. Mayor Murphy.
Aye. These are the manual vouchers. These are bills that have already been paid before, that, that, that are on, uh, that are on a, an automatic pay. Keep the lights on.
Thanks for running through them.
Uh, resolution authorizing to execute budget transfer to fund utilities. Water budget, and this is transferring uh, eleven thousand dollars from the contingent to beach utilities water, and from contingent, seven thousand dollars to public safety utility, public safety building utilities water. Uh, and I think that the, uh, the transfer for the beach is most likely for the spray ground.
Yeah.
Spray ground, uh, went over this year, and the rest is for the outdoor sprinkler that is at this building.
And, uh, this is just a follow-up of the comments that I started with. Um, some of the spray part might have been because of Clint Kretor, but the other part was that we had raised water rates ten percent. So, and even at the beginning of the year, I knew that our water is gonna come to somewhere around forty-five, forty-six thousand dollars based on that. And again, when, uh, when you're looking to, uh, expand this spray park, one of the things that you're gonna have to keep in mind is uh, the spray park, even though you couldn't turn it off, which also not turned on a lot this year, you couldn't have a, a awful lot of rain, so there were a lot of days the spray park wasn't actually used this summer. And we have fifty million dollars worth of bonding to do on county water projects coming up in the next five years. So you're probably looking at further water increases, so you just have to keep in mind that the spray ground cost could go up before you, uh, do the new spray ground, twenty, twenty-five percent, and you could be looking at eighty thousand dollars. So, I, I'm not sure that at some point, if, um, you might wanna try to come up with some kind of theme that can be dedicated into the rec department to try to help them out. That way they, they have, uh, additional funding to help with, do what they do. But, you know, you're not gonna improve that, recoup that credit money, right? Now we only pay twelve dollars an hour for the part timers, and Jason has a hard time getting people to the beach, and that's not gonna last forever. Eventually, he's gonna have to start paying people more like fourteen, fifteen dollars an hour, cuz that's what, that's what New York State has. So just keep it, keep in mind that as you go and do spray parks and parks and things like that, there are other costs, and especially with the spray ground, that unfortunately our cost of water has, has risen greatly, and it's gonna raise exponentially after this. So just something to keep in mind to make sure that the funding's in place as you do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, new motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And that's the agenda. Uh, resolution authorizing, authorizing to execute a professional service agreement engineering and design services for water quality improvements project at the Village Home parking lots at Harbor Island Park and adjacent, adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, this is behind the water treatment plant. We are going to be doing paving, and this paving, uh, is going to be impervious, uh, meaning that, uh, the rainwater should not run off it.
Purbius.
Purbius, it's gonna be purbius. The rainwater should not run off it. It should soak into the ground in Harbor Island Park, hopefully, uh, reducing our stormwater load into the harbor. Any questions, concerns?
Well, the, the only question I had is, I thought originally the county was gonna take care of this. It was behind me, but.
Yeah, I guess they, they.
Yeah, I guess I, I had, uh, reached out to the director of the water treatment plant and, uh, uh, Bolt didn't remember, uh, answering the reason, I guess, that might have happened in some other past.
Cuz they, they stored their equipment there for a long time, and what's all we're talking?
Okay, well.
I mean, you weren't.
You were not here.
I was not here. No, no, I, I don't recall what happened.
There's an understanding on the part of everybody that that was.
Maybe normal.
We really can't leave it that way.
Yeah, um, I would question why this project's being done. Um, that parking lot is not used very much. I was down there the other day. The whole western end is new pavement. Um, purpose pavement, if we get a storm surge, will be in purpose pavement. That's what purpose pavement does. It has a human maintenance required, requirement to keep it purbius. Um. I don't see why you wouldn't just pave this parking lot to do drainage improvements, stormwater management, treatment. Um, just seems like a huge expense. The other thing I would say is this resolution appears to approve the contract dated June fifth, twenty twenty-three. And the contract is not for forty-five thousand dollars, forty-five thousand dollars. That contract actually has a total of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. It's um, for design development phase, stormwater pollution land permitting phase, building phase. Hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So I would suggest to you at least, if you're gonna approve this, do that, but the other point I've raised is this year the village is spending two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars on our own engineer. One of his duties listed on the webpage is to oversee construction projects like this. I'm not sure why we need to pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to an outside engineer for basically a paving job. So with that, I'll leave you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That, the, that, that parking lot is a jammed lot. It's very, very busy.
Looks like Moonscape too.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a little Moonscape, I don't know when he shows up.
Okay. New motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, Village Wide Sidewalk Improvements Resolution awarding contract for twenty, uh, three to oh-three. Um, engineer, you wanna talk about this a little bit? Let's step the mic next to you.
Okay, Speaker, uh, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board. This project is going to install new sidewalks and curbs in the areas around the Edo's Church and New First Baptist Church. Uh, it will also include some minor drainage improvements. That is uh, very minor, replaces the cat facing, probably rebuilding more cat facing. And in addition to, uh, plant fifteen new trees along Underell Avenue, link with structural soil to, uh, prevent any, uh, proposed, any damage that she, during, you know, their growth. The structural soil is, is utilized to prevent the, uh, the, uh, concrete from, uh, any upheaval for the. the concrete from any upheaval from the trees. In addition, this will also incorporate road resurfacing in the same areas. We just had a bid opening last week. And apparently Landy came in as the the low bidder. We'd like to award the contract with a potential start date as early as November first.
And Landy's worked with us before as a.
Landy had done the TDVG work for us right on East Prospect prior to my planning year.
He also did the dredging in the river that was started and stopped in twenty eleven.
I believe that is correct.
Yeah, sorry.
You know. It's eight hundred and sixty nine thousand.
Yeah, the the lowest possible bid was you you were up by ninety five dollars, eight hundred sixty nine thousand and ninety five dollars. We are requesting a fifteen percent contingency to account for field conditions that we may encounter, which would increase the requested appropriation to one million dollars. As mentioned during work session, we are dedicating four hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds and one hundred seventy six thousand in funds from the stabilization fund for as the project. So that will pay for a good portion of the project factoring, you know, this contract, construction inspection and the design work we already had done for the work.
Yeah. Washington Bill certainly deserves the attention.
Yeah, we received a lot of requests, petition with, I think, you know, couple hundred signatures requesting new sidewalks in and around St. Vito's. And we want to extend it to our other religious institutions here.
Okay. Any the motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next up is five C. Stay up there. There's a resolution authorizing to contract Mount Pleasant, change the contract. Mount Pleasant Avenue sidewalk drainage improvements and authorization to remit payment request number two. And yes, that's it. Okay. You know, this is.
Yes, this is the Ralph and Gertrude project and the Mount Pleasant and we're going to get the school sidewalk project. Most of these in bonus mayor award are from the stormwater portion of the project where we had encountered non suitable soils for the new pulver. The order gone, we encountered additional concrete structures that had been removed, additional piping had been installed, the goal unforeseen. Some of the some of these overages again were additional big plans that we exceeded the estimate in engineers' plans.
Okay, great. Any questions, concerns?
Yeah.
That's the little confusion reading a bunch of it. So a portion of the overall project was over due to unforeseen circumstances. So was the overall project to one point five million that is referred to in here? And then you're you're raising one portion that was like one hundred eighty nine and extra ninety thousand?
So, okay, yes, it.
Ah, yeah. I would have shared. Yeah, you have the referral to to the one contractor going up to from one eighty nine to like double ninety thousand. But it refers to the overall project as one point five million. So you is it is just part of the the project was over budget and the overall project is one point five million and we adding ninety thousand to that?
So the overall project bid, the day's bid was one point five two nine, I believe. They're they're achieving for approximately one hundred seventy four thousand. The hundred eighty five thousand is related to additional items that were already in the data that we exceeded quantities, exceeded materials, fresh stone that had to be put back in place. The other ninety four thousand for for change orders. For example, unforeseen subsurface conditions that were not accounted for in the original bid that we had to move structures. Things of that nature.
So what would be the the bottom line total for the whole project?
I believe the bottom line for that this change order would be just around a million, eight hundred and eight thousand.
And we're getting two hundred and seventy five thousand for a mod community?
We're getting two hundred and seventy five.
And then we're going to put in for as much as possible for fee mod for the sanitary sewer that was damaged.
Correct. Of course.
The consulting engineer who always provided CN services for the project segregating output costs specifically for stormwater for reimbursement of the.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five D. Resolution. Resolution authorizing payoff of library tan. The village of Mamaronek borrowed money to make the library solvent. The library was going to go out of business in June if they didn't have an infusion of cash because of, you know, problems with their accounting that we've been assured have been corrected.
Verified.
We verified have been corrected and if that hadn't happened, there wouldn't be a library right now. So I'm very happy that the board did this. But what this is, is the agreement that we have with the library to pay us back. And they're going to be paying us back over three years. And that they will be paying us back with interest. So we'll probably make a little money on it at the end of the day. But the good news is that the library will still be here and hopefully they will be here for another hundred years. They just celebrated their hundredth anniversary at a very nice gala last week. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
Well, it's not quite what we discussed last time because we'll be they'll be paying back the first hand, but we'll be taking out two tans. We can't. So it's not as it's not as we thought they could just pay back firsthand over a period of three years and that's not the pace. So we're going to have to issue.
Couple more tans.
We're going to have to keep doing this every.
So they catch up with us?
February or March or so, so that the library can.
Or that they 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 raise their, you know, rates enough that they could just pay us back. So they they have.
They also have a budget that's coming up.
Yeah.
Right. But I mean, the 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 thought was that we could have just done the single tan and they could have paid it back over a series of years and that would have been simpler, but that's not the case. So they have to pay back the tan fully in this first year. It's due in June. And we will have to be doing that probably for the next two years, which is what our what which is what the original plan was. When we first started talking about this in June, we thought we were going to have to do that.
Okay. But this agreement, what this agreement does is it says that we are, in other words, we get paid first. You know, we are the, yeah.
But I think, but we're going to have to vote to authorize the 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 board of trustees is going to have to vote to authorize the subsequent two tans. We can't authorize something going forward.
We understand that.
The resolution requires the library to commit irrevocable to fund each year's payments. They have to do that by the end of this year. To commit irrevocable payments each year.
Right. Good.
There you go.
No. Keep on the mic.
So we're paying one for ten, right? That doesn't necessarily mean we have to take another another ten. We could fund it out of our own assigned funds and we're going to be collecting interest on it.
No.
Right? Or do we have?
No, we have to take another ten.
You know, probably even the bill of suspension, bill of fines for the library. Okay. Because then we don't end on, like I say, borrow money when we have the library. That always means money first.
Okay.
I heard you know, activate information once. You're in anticipation of the revenue coming in this season.
Okay. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck to the library. Resolution accepting bench donation. This is a donation for a bench in Harbor Island Park by Larry Ratner in what?
This is the bark park.
In in Harbor Island Park, by Larry Ratner and Kim Kamen. And this is two thousand three hundred twenty nine dollars and eighty cents and we appreciate the donation. It's very kind of them. Questions, concerns?
We need more benches here.
And and they are, it looks to me like they're dedicating it to past pets. Mugs, Napoleon and Peaches.
Beautiful. That's amazing.
God bless them.
God bless Napoleon.
God bless Napoleon. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes. Five F. Resolution authorizing to purchase of one Chevy Bolt EUV. We talked about this at the work session. It's included in our capital budget. It's replacing a two thousand and seven Ford Focus. It's for the building department. Any questions, concerns? In motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Authorization to execute a professional service agreement to provide construction management and inspection services for village wide sidewalk improvements. The engineer talked about before the many sidewalk improvement projects that we have. And this this would be providing oversight because the engineer can't do it all and he does a lot. And, you know, we have a ton of construction work going on in the village and some of it will have to be found out, but he'll be watching the watchers.
Like the executive producer. The other guys are the others, other showrunners.
I need a motion? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution establishing capital budget account for phase four dock repair at Harbor Island Marina and authorization to purchase materials for dock repair. Our harbor master is sitting here tonight patiently and he was at the work session and he explained the needed repairs and Jeff and his crew have been doing the repairs in house. So what he's asking us to do really is buy the pressure treated wood.
Pressure treated wood and all the hardwoods to build twelve twenty seven sections.
Any questions, concerns? Well, we have Jeff here.
We should have taken you earlier.
Uh. In a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Jeff.
Good night, Jeff.
Resolution increasing funding authorization for construction of the Bark Park at Harbor Island Park. Dan, you want to talk about this really quickly?
The, as you mentioned, the moonscape of our parking lot located by the sewer treatment plant, about one third of it is no longer a moonscape. It looks like a normal parking lot. That was because we had to just make some repairs after we opened up the the bark park. We used our paving contractor to do the work. The cost was twenty four thousand dollars. There's approximately thirteen thousand dollars left in the capital budget account. Our general coordinator parks has asked that a minimal balance of three thousand dollars be left in order to take care of any issue that may occur over the next several months. But he said we could use at least ten thousand of that. We're asking for a fourteen thousand five hundred dollar transfer to the capital account so we can pay the contractor for the work.
And again, this isn't the bark park. This is the park, part of the parking lot. I don't understand why the bark park.
Yeah. It's just in terms of.
It was a, we had to get it done.
You need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is pressing the board again, but I know a lot of the guys would really like to say something.
So, um. Most recently, um, I have been called to most recently I have been, there's been people, there has been concerns of some residents in the community stating that I had posted something online that I did not post. It was a post that was written by an organization called One Mamaronek that I am affiliated with, but I did not write the post. Nor did I nor am I in charge of social media. Or am I the sole person of this organization? And I just wanted to clarify that because when we are a part of something, that doesn't mean that you are the only voice. And that it doesn't speak to an individual's character. So anything that was posted in the post wasn't, I will clarify what the post was. And I, and while I can wholeheartedly see how the post offended some people, not all people, but it it doesn't even, if it takes one offending offending one person, sometime that is enough, but it offended some and not all. The post was talking about this young, this young man, this young boy, this young youth, this child who was killed in Chicago. And the post stated that it does not condone violence on any person. And it did list the things, especially the things that are going on in this world. It didn't state in its intention, it didn't state that it was for or against any particular person. We just, it just didn't denounce any type of violence or terrorism. And while the words that were situated alongside of it, I understand it is how it harmed people. Now that was just me talking regarding the post. Now this is me talking for myself. I apologize if the post harmed anybody. I still believe as Leilani Isaac Reed, that nobody should be harmed. No person on this God green earth should be harmed, shouldn't be targeted. Shouldn't they? Every person has a right for self determination. And right now, because we are talking about people who live in Israel and people who live in Palestine, we are talking, I'm talking about any person has a right to live and I feel and understand and have compassion and empathy for the any person who has experienced or even indirectly has had an effect on the things that are happening around this world. And especially in that space right in this day and time. But what I I'm going to leave it at that because I want people to understand my character and who I am, that I am not just a sole person of an organization or affiliated with an organization, while I am affiliated with an organization. My words and organizations' words can be two different things and I can feel, I can feel have compassion, I can have empathy and I also believe as my role in the, as a village elected official, I personally feel that I can have those compact, that compassion. I can have those feelings and still love and 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 hold people, hold space for others. But I also have to remember as an elected official that I can't speak for one side. Because at elected official, I have to hold space for every single person. And that is what I truly believe in this work. I understand and hear the hurt that people feel wholeheartedly because I know what that feels like. So I just wanted to clarify all those things and leave it at that. And, oh, sorry. And I I chose to do it right. And I, I chose to do it right here and right now because it is recorded. And it is um, something that some people can go back and and listen to if they need clarification, rather than um, listen to what other people have to say. And I welcome any conversation. I always welcome conversation with any person. So, that's it.
Darren Winchester. Um, I'm also a part of One Mamaronek. Um, we talk about teachable moments, okay? I unfortunately, I was fortunately, I was able to grow in Mamaronek and my aunt went to the mess because we worked the equipment family out there. So since a little kid, I go to all the different parties and sacred dinners, uh, farmers for all the cousins, one more cousins. Um, and so you learn. But not everybody knows. I remember when Rodney King video came out. It took us twenty years to convince people that these things were happening. So when we saw George Floyd video several years ago, it got more people to wake up. And we talked about what is racism to me may not be racist to somebody who's white. So what is antisemitism for somebody who's Jewish may not be antisemitism to me? And it may not be because I don't understand. But we're in this environment where we run the social media because we want things where political movements to hurt people. Instead of saying, hey, listen, one M, you missed the ball on this. Maybe you should have been the one as a community and we can help you understand where you missed the ball on this. But yet we come to point fingers. And how do we gain solidarity by pointing fingers? We don't, because like they said, you know, pointing fingers, people just three forty back at you. So I take her at her word because I know if I mess up, I tell people put it to my head, not my heart. Put it to my head, not my heart. Because a lot of people joined One Mamaronek because its inception was to fight racism. So you then can't think that we're just gonna say, okay, antisemitism's okay, but racism's not. You know, I posted day one, there was a group Black Lives Matter Chicago. They actually applauded it. That's not Black Lives La, Matter Mamaronek. Okay, so we can't be held responsible for others' actions. But when we do mess up or we do come to that line that's less than perfect, we admit it. We ask for help. We come together and we teach each other. But we can't think that things are always to someone's heart. Okay, and that's all I'm saying. What happened October seventh was horrible.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone who doesn't think that was terrorism by an organization whose own sole purpose is to kill Jewish people. If you think that anybody you know is okay with that, then you need to find somebody different. So I'm offering a solution here. If there are people in this Jewish community, they're offended by what One Mamaronek did, then get together, have a conversation. We can have a forum. We can do it at the M R Theater. Do it in a park. But have a forum. Teach. That's all I'm saying is, don't be offended, teach. Because then we don't make that mistake again.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else like to comment?
You know, I, yeah, I would like to say something. I've been to the public.
I agree with my dear friend Darren. Um, ancient culture simply cancels the ability to learn and grow as a people. And when you just, you know, you take somebody who quite frankly, lives, lives their life on your sleeve. Really does, very, very emotional. And you take one line out of content and you're gonna say, that's how we're gonna describe you. That's how we're gonna paint you for your whole life. It's wrong.
Mm-hmm.
It's wrong on every level.
Right.
And it goes for every one of us. I says, if if you wanna see somebody who has said stupid things over the year, speak to my grandmother, speak to my mother, speak to my sister, speak to my niece. They'll be happy to tell you that I've said stupid things over the years. But you know what? Taking it in context of my whole life, I think I've been pretty good. I think most of the people out there have been pretty good most of their lives. I can agree with you all the time, but the fact of the matter, that's how I feel. Look, and look, if you wanna speak to that, so.
Oh, thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do, address the board afterward, but let me have your goodness.
No, no, you.
That's our ceremonies.
Okay, I just wanna uh, mention the passing of uh, Frank Mosher.
Yes.
He was uh,
Sweetheart.
Absolutely. The Mosher brothers were uh, members of this community over thirty years. Uh, fantastic mechanics, the two brothers, personal uh, friends, uh, friend's wife, Vicki, was actually the daughter of my father's best friend. And he will be very, very sorely missed. And I wish everybody in the uh, village just to say a prayer for him.
I agree.
Um, again, I just wanted to uh, mention, at some point you're gonna have to look at capital spending. You proposed over six million dollars worth of spending in this work session alone.
Mm-hmm.
You've already passed five million dollars this year. And that doesn't include you have a fire truck coming up, you still have village wall coming up. You have the dam coming up, you have Holstead Avenue coming up. So you have a lot of money that you guys are committing. Um,
Mm-hmm.
Finally, um, I wanna thank the uh, and your engineering department because as you can see, I'm a walker and I did need to get some permits done. And they were very accommodating. They had somebody need to go over village wall, bring the uh, file over so I could look at it and uh, do what I needed to do at the house. And uh, finally, I wanna thank the police department because I did point out that I am under ADA right now. And if I wanted to dine and dash, I told the police officer he had to give me a hundred yard head start. And being the friendly village, the police officer looked at me and said, I'll give you two hundred yards for that. So that's our friendly village. Thank you.
Hey, Len, have a good evening. Glad to see you up and around. Anyone else?
Okay, yeah, um, uh, we got, we got a lot of e-mails. Well, not a lot, we got a fair number of emails about the post of One Mamaronek. And I had a hard time writ, w- w- writing, returning, answering them because uh, some of them were over the line, uh, and and um, and I had the same trouble when communicating using this phone to my friends in Israel and uh, the territories to find out how they were. Because I'd been over there roughly fourteen times on multiple assignments and 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 hundreds, hundreds of assignments and multiple missions. And uh, and uh, and I know just how painful and awful that was. It was almost too much, it's almost too much to bear. So I understand how how hurt people were by this. And I understand how wrong and 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 boneheaded that that uh, that post was, not in what it said, in what it omitted. It was a serious sin of omission or context. That said, to see um, uh, my friend and and colleague, uh, Leilani Isaac Reed mentioned uh, as an antisemite or she having said antisemitic things uh, infuriated me on on a lot of levels because I know her. And uh, and it's, it's just not, not her. And 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 you can talk to her and there's no reason to talk to me about that and call her that name. Um, uh, yeah, so, but I understand the hurt these people feel because the 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 uh, the the idea of of uh, of not knowing when you call somebody. Can I even ask if you're okay, if your family's okay? What do you say? Did anybody you know died? How do you even go there? So I understand how how uh, awesome the the hurt is. And for Jewish people, it's pretty serious because, you know, people have tried to kill them. And 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 it it reminds them of entire history. So this is a landmine. I use that term when when we talked about it earlier. It's a landmine. And uh, and people need to talk passive, talk, talk to each other and not use the shorthand uh, of uh, social media to to virtue signal and um, and try to uh, make uh, political points or whatever. I mean, the the decent thing, uh, uh, when it comes to politics in this context, the decent thing is to be silent. And uh, and I guess I'll shut up.
Who else? Uh, you know, I had, I, I admitted, we have to add a couple of things uh, in the uh, in the late hour, I forgot. Uh, I need a motion to add an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm adding to the agenda is the appointment of Michelle.
Goodman.
Michelle Goodman to the tree committee. Uh, all, I I I need to, I'm making the motion. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now I need another motion to add an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And this is rescheduling uh, the regular meeting of November twentieth to November twenty-seven. Uh, it is now, it is, yes, and November twentieth is going to be uh, the pre-organizational meeting. Uh, where the, where the board gets together and discusses appointments for the future. So we're we're rescheduling the regular meeting that was scheduled for November twentieth to November twenty-seven. Uh, and I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, report from the clerk treasurer?
We have nothing. For bear.
Thank you, Augie. Mr. Village Attorney? Thank you. Uh, minutes boards committees, uh, minutes of the tree committee meeting of September sixth, twenty twenty-three. Minutes of the board of traffic commissioners meeting of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, as as uh, Len pointed out, uh, it was, Mosher, Frank Mosher has died. Uh, his, his son Frank Junior uh, is best friends with my son Tommy Murphy Junior. So I've, I've known them uh, for twenty-eight years now and uh, and it's a family you'd never meet. Uh, I wish him. Family is fascinating. And if anybody's looking, it was a GoFundMe to help Mr. Mosher. He's saved for a long time. That was the song. Uh, and you know, just, these are, these are difficult times uh, for a lot of people. And a lot of people are on edge and rightfully so. World is uh, not a good place these days. So, you know, let's try and treat each other with a little more. A little more compassion in this, right? Because it's, it's a, it's a hard world sometimes. And there's a lot of people in a lot of pain uh, over events in eight thousand miles away. And uh, it it's, it's a it's, it's just difficult and uh, I, I'm very close to people. My, my wife is uh, is family in Israel. And uh, she spent a lot of her life in Israel. This is a traumatic, traumatic event for a lot of people. So, that those are the moment of silence. Everybody who is uh, losing their lives in wars across this world. Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.